Good evening. I'd like to first announce that we're having some audio difficulties with our software, so everyone has to please speak up. Before I ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance, before I ask you to stand, after the pledge, could you please allow the moment of silence for the passing of highly decorated The microphones are not working. Township of Abington, you've been saying that you need audio devices? K-9 officer Ryan Rickers this past week?
Yes.
The manual devices will pick up the voices, but just after the normal production At the conclusion, please remain standing for moment of silence. room here in this room. Okay? Funeral arrangements for Officer Rickers are posted on our website, and they're going We will be able to piece it together for production with a TV and not your audio device. to be for next week. So at this time, would everyone please stand for the pledge? Okay, so everyone, please speak up. So at this time, I'd like to open the meeting by saying, welcome to the Township of Abington I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, August 9, 2018. And may we please have a roll call.
Commissioner Mike.
Here.
Brodsky.
Here.
Rothman.
Here.
Puplosito.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. As I said, Officer Rickers will be here this coming week, and funeral arrangements are posted on our website. At this time, I have the President's announcements on his files. I have one, since there were no committee meetings during the month of August, public comments will be allowed after each agenda items. That's for both unfinished and new agenda business items to see. So comments from the public will be allowed after each three items. At this time, I have an announcement from Commissioner Michael Thompson.
Thank you, President Lucre. Before we get started tonight, we want to address the water situation, so I'm going to read a brief statement, and then we'll add a little into it afterward.
Please speak up.
Sure. First, please allow me to begin my remarks by thanking State Representative Madely Dean for her leadership in working with the township on behalf of our residents, and for her leadership in Aqua PAs taking the North Hills well offline this past month. As many of you know, the Centers for Disease Control via the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, or the ATSDR, released a voluminous report called "The Toxological Profile for Fluoroalkyls," and sorry, I've been butchered some of these chemical names, addressing in part two types of perfluoralkyls, or PFOS as we call them. One is perfluoroctanoic acid, or PFOW, and the other one is perfluoroctanoic acid, or PFOS. These chemical compounds are commonly found in firefighting foam that was routinely used at NAS Wiligrove Portsham, as well as the Naval Air Warfare Center at Vermont Stur. On July 25, 2018, the Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, held a PFOS community engagement meeting in Portsham. A listening session made clear that there is still confusion as to what is an acceptable level. Given this discussion, we immediately began to work with Representative Dean and Aqua for what is the best interest of North Hills. On August 2, 2018, Representative Dean hosted a public meeting and invited federal elected officials, representatives from Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and the Federal Centers for Disease Control. Many questions were asked, many, but not all, were answered. This evening, the board commissioners will increase our efforts, work, and diligence by presenting and passing a resolution to encourage and influence Pennsylvania's legislature to enact a law that results in a change in environmental regulations to provide safe drinking water for our residents. We will work with Aqua and examine every aspect of our business relationship with Aqua to assure that they are doing all that they should be to protect our residents, including installing granular activated carbon or GAC filters, or resin filters, on the wells that serve our community. We will also be working with the PA Public Utility Commission to assure that they, Aqua, and everyone else are working together to better the community. With that, a few quick comments. Nothing in the water has changed overnight. The water that we're drinking today is almost the same as the weather we drank a few weeks ago. In the North Hills community, the well was indeed shut down. The well was previously showing PFOW, PFOS levels that were somewhere in the 40s, picking up in the high 50s and sometimes down in the high 20s. That water, like I said, that well's been shut down. New water is being brought in from the Abington well, which is considerably cleaner than what we're drinking before. Just to give you an idea of the levels, one part per kilo is roughly the equivalent of a grain of sand in a Olympic sized swimming pool. When we first really learned what the acceptable levels of PFOS and PFOW were back in 2009, the EPA set a limit of 600 parts per trillion in our drinking water. As we began to learn more, in 2016, that limit was reduced to 70 parts per trillion, which is a pretty dramatic reduction. And what we heard in Portsham two weeks ago was that the CDC is recommending a reduction by a factor of 10. So it's been very difficult for us to really understand what safe drinking water is with this chemical compound. The reason we're supporting HB 705 is because that bill will mandate that water served in this state is served at five parts per trillion, which is considerably less than the average drinking levels before. Further, we respectfully request that Aqua make a commitment to our community. All we're asking is for clean PFOW, PFOW, non-detectable drinking water. I don't think that's asking too much for that. And finally, let me just close by saying, I want to give a quick thanks to my fellow commissioners on the board for their support with this, who would like to thank my neighboring commissioners in Springfield, Sheltonham, and Upper Dublin for their support on all this, and all the state reps that have helped out, and our state senator who's introducing a new pinning bill with HB 705. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, let me adjourn you. We have presentations of first elected calling them our Chief of Police, Chief Pat Roy.
Thank you, President Lucre. Good evening, members of the board, President Lucre, and staff, and members of the audience. I thank you for allowing me to introduce our newest officer, who just made probation in July. This represents the departure of how we used to do swearing-in. We would swear people in immediately after they were hired. It's a new program where they, once they achieve permanent status, we bring them in to swear. So I'm happy to introduce Officer Ryan Hosara, also known as Captain America. So Ryan was born at Holy Redeemer Hospital in Abington Township, and he was raised in the Fox Chase section of northeast Philadelphia, just outside of Brockwood. He graduated from Pierce College with a bachelor's degree in business management. In 2014, he attended the Philadelphia Police Academy, where he served for three years in the 14th District, which is northwest Philadelphia, mountain area, German town. After three years with the Philadelphia Police Department, Ryan was hired by Abington Police Department. In July of 2017, he was assigned to Lieutenant Sallman, Sergeant Williams, and Sergeant Toledo of the famous Beepleton behind us. And over the past year, Ryan has served as a probationary officer. And after a series of intense evaluations by his field training officers and supervisors, Ryan achieved permanent status as an Abington police officer. And I might add that Officer Hosara, over the last year, has been recognized with official department commendations for going beyond the call of duty. So I think that experience that he had in Philadelphia helped him as he came out here to serve in our township. So we are very happy to have him on board. So please join me in congratulating Officer Ryan Hosara as he's promoted to the rank of permanent status police officer. I'd also like to thank Judge Kessler for taking time out on his big day to swear Ryan in. Thank you, Judge. And we have Teresa Hosara, his mother, please join us. She'll be holding the Bible for Ryan.
Raise your hand, the Bible there. Raise your left hand. And I'd like you to repeat after me, please. Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Hosara.
Ryan Hosara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington.
And the Township of Abington.
That I will faithfully discharge with fidelity.
That I will faithfully discharge with fidelity.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer for Abington Township.
As a police officer for Abington Township.
And will obey the rules and regulations.
And will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department.
Governing all sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department.
Congratulations, Officer.
Thank you.
Ryan, before you sit down, if you want to introduce your family to the board and your honor.
I'd just like to say thank you to Board of Commissioners, Township Managers, my friends and my family. Here with my family, my sister Shannon Stone, my niece Samantha Stone, my mother Teresa Hosara, my brother Anthony Hosara, and my nephew Harrison Stone, my girlfriend Gina Keenan, my brother-in-law David Stone, my nephew David Stone, and my father Anthony Hosara.
With that being said, I would just like to say thank you to everybody who made me a part of your township. Thank you. We'll take a brief commemoration as a family.
We call on you at this time. At this time, we adjourn to another recognition award. This time, I appreciate Tom Pecker.
So for me, one of the greatest aspects of being commissioner has been the opportunity to connect with the youth in our community, whether it's through attending Boy Scout meetings or Club Scout meetings or Girl Scout meetings, and talking with the children about what local government is. You know, the people in my community, the boys and girls, you meet with Dylan's dad, or Aiden's dad, or their coach, or something like that. And so it's been very rewarding, and I hope that we continue to do this in this community so that the young men and women can see what government is and what it should be. So tonight, I have the opportunity to honor one young man in particular, who has been a partner to me over the last couple of years in sharing information about what's happening in the community. We've sent out a weekly newsletter dating back to April of 2013, when I was first running for election, and my wife had the great idea a couple of years into it, that we ought to add a column that was written by children in the community. And so every week, we've had a weekly kids' correspondent column, where young men have been give voice to what's undermined, whether it's about why Abington is a great place or about particular issues. We had a brave young woman write about the anxiety that she was experiencing and how she worked her way through it. Another young woman spoke about what it's like growing up in a world where there's still gender inequity. And so I learned a lot from each young man we meet. And the young man I'm going to honor tonight, Connor Pedersen, come on up. Connor has been my partner. He has been what we call our press secretary, and for more than a year, he has actually coordinated the schedule of the children that will be writing the weekly columns. And he's part of the penitentiary staff, and Jamie and his brother Liam is here, and I think his grandmother is here tonight. And they're wonderful. They make the neighborhood a better place, and I'm delighted to be your friends. So Connor, thank you. Thank you for your coordination, and thank you for your excellent work in writing columns. Tomorrow is the final edition of the Ward 10 Weekly, and it's fitting that Connor is going to write the last column. So let me just read to you the citation. And it says, Connor, "A proud community thanks you for your hard work and dedication on behalf of the residents of Ward 10. In recognition of your outstanding efforts as press secretary for Commissioner Hecker in coordinating and writing articles for the Kids' Correspondent Connection column in my newsletter, the Ward 10 Weekly, the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township hereby awards this certificate of commendation to Connor Pedersen. We appreciate your community service and extend our gratitude to you." Thank you.
For those of you who are here that might not be here at the end of the meeting, this is Commissioner Tom Pecker, present the meeting as Commissioner of Ward 10. He will be stepping down out of necessity because he's relocating to another portion, another part of Abington Township. So as such, he will not be representing Ward 10, but he's done an outstanding job. And Connor, you were the recipient of the latest award given out by Commissioner Tom Hecker, so I want to thank you and Commissioner Tom Hecker for doing a outstanding job as representing Ward 10 in Abington Township. I think you ought to take Connor with you for your bachelor.
If Dylan and Jamie will let me, I certainly will.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the agenda over to Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes and the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Lucre. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is items A through B, outline our agenda tonight, and I so does.
To move to second, any comments from commissioners or staff? If you want, and all is a favor.
Aye.
So we have no committee meetings, so the consent agenda had no opportunity to have comment ever, right? So aren't we supposed to go down them and allow for comment on any of those?
No, I believe the Speaker is right. Since there was no committee agenda, we shouldn't be able to speak on any of the four items listed on the consent agenda. And are your comments?
So, Rob, let me just pull these over here. So I have some comments on clearing fund. In particular, those, I guess what I'd like is for you to explain the difference between clearing fund and, so there were many items on there, for instance, the budget for the cameras and so on here, and those are.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes. So is the clearing fund, as you put it, or is clearing fund just what got spent this month? Is that got spent since the last time you did a clearing fund report? How does that work?
I'll ask the chairman of finance committee to.
Mr. Kevin.
Okay, Kevin, is he here? Okay, I'm sorry. Kevin, our finance director? That's Kevin Maron, our finance director. Good evening, commissioners. I'll speak up.
My name's Kevin Maron, I'm the finance director here. That is the current activity for the month of July, I'm sorry, June. Clear fund, you asked that question. Clear fund is a fund that chooses the money that comes in and goes out. Sales tax, we collect sales tax. Money comes in, money goes out. SPS Technologies, we get money from SPS Technologies, and it has to go back to Cheltenham Township, the Cheltenham Flash. The sewers were in it, and sewer goes through Cheltenham Township, so they get the money. So that's what the clearing funds is. This is a whole different fund.
So my comment on that is that, you know, again, my huge concern is this waiver agreement. So we don't see anything on here. We don't know if any waiver things happened during this month. There's no accounting for that. And this is really important. This takes it out of the, I mean, millions of dollars out of the purview of the taxpayer. They can't see how it's being spent. And in the overall picture, when we have things like a stream, Beta Creek, that needs to be cleared up, otherwise those homes may get absolutely run over in the next rainstorm. Or we have trees that are falling down at the Boy Scout Preserve because they're covered with vines, and we haven't seen to found enough money to take care of that. So we have those issues going on, and we can't see, the only way to really know what's happening is we can't see how our money is being spent and how it should better be spent. So when you spend millions of dollars in a waiver agreement, you're allowed to have it go unseen by the public, you're doing us a disservice, in essence, legislative loss. Okay? You can't see where it's going.
Thank you, Ray Todd.
I think it should be said that the finance committee, for the exception of the month of July, means, the finance committee, for the exception of the month of July, means every month, where we do go through everything that is spent and all the money that comes in, which has to parlay back to the budgeted item list. Those are examined by the finance committee and assumedly the rest of the board at their, before the full board meeting. So the statement made is untrue. All the money and all the things that are spent are actually shown in every finance committee meeting and are submitted by the finance director in detail.
It's a point.
You have a word there. Manager of the board, can you have a word?
So everyone understands, there's been discussion about fee waivers. The policy of this township is that there are no fee waivers. The only time a fee is waived is when it's in front of this body in a public meeting. Therefore, there are no fees being waived without the public's knowledge.
Thank you, Senator. Right? The motion is moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? And your staff, if you're not always a favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on, we'll go on unfinished business, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hecker, the Chair of the Public Police Department.
Thanks. The public police department has monitors and unfinished business in 16803, that's 080920. And this is a motion for appetizing order number 2158, amending chapter 132, Sewers and Sewage of the Code of the Township of Abington, to add new article XXXIG titled "No Road Sewer District," establishing a new sewer district in the vicinity of Mill Road, providing for the assessment and recovery of costs and expenses for construction of sewer collection lines by the foot front and or in a pit pool, providing for collection of sewer rental rate from property owners within the sewer district, and providing for the need of properties subject to settlements and disservice.
It's going to be moved to second. Any comments from the public? Any comments from commissioners, staff? Commissioner Wilson.
Could we just have some sort of explanation? Do you want to explain why we need ordinance?
Certainly. And I think that the motion is written out in incredible detail, which tells you exactly why you need this ordinance. You're going to be installing sewers in an area of the township that has not been previously sewered. So in order to assess the property owner's cost of installing the sewers, in order to set the rates for sewer fees, and in order to set connection fees, you need to establish a sanitary sewer district so you can do all of those things. And that is exactly what this ordinance will do. And once the sewers are installed in this area, we'll be able to do everything that we need to do to assess the properties and to collect sewer rates.
Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, and just to expand upon that, at the time that they were doing board meeting work on Mill Road, we received, and I can see some quotes from the residents, one resident in this area, there's only seven houses that do not have sewer on Mill Road. It's a small gap in the public sewer system. We had a public meeting where Dylan Montgomery and Tim were at, and we received a vote back from the seven residents, four voted for, two voted against, and one did not respond. Because of that, we went ahead. We had a full presentation about the costs, the process, that is what we're recovering through now, and it's the only section of Mill Road right now that is unpaid. So pay for the Aqua, and everything else is unpaid. So we're going to get this done. Do we have a time scheduled?
Yes, we actually have. The project is out to bid right now. We met with the bidders. Bid will be opened on August 20, and then next month at the committee meeting, we'll bring the results of that bid to you.
And for anybody who's watching and is in the area, the expectation is to have the construction completed and the road all filed and paid before the winter hits.
By November 20 is our target date.
I wasn't going to be that specific, but okay.
I use a little.
If I could just, Andy, could you maybe reach out to people watching?
Oh, yes. Amy Montgomery, Director of Engineering and Code, also the management.
And sitting to your left is?
Tim Clark, the Assistant to the Engineering Department.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners?
Project negotiations, no. As a favor, good explanations.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? If you're not always a favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Commissioner Brent Sanchez, the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administrative Code and Land Use Committee has three items of unfinished business tonight, the first being ACL 1, and also a corresponding going ACL 4. This is a motion to approve ordinance number 2160, appealing chapter 62, building construction, Article 1, general standards, section 2 amendments, at subsection G, and creating and enacting chapter 7, Word of Code appeals, including exhibit A of chapter 7 in ICER.
Second. It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Manager of the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear, the motion is to authorize advertisement and to approve the language specific to what the role of those members being appointed are. If you recall, when you created the Board of Codingists. If you recall, when you created the Board of Code Appeals, the makeup of who's going to be on the Board was still to be determined. So once you find you, and what you're approving, is try to make sure, and make sure you're all read this, and make sure you're all aware, just so that everyone understands, that what's going to be advertised is now going to include what is in here as to what is the composition of the Board. That was the one step that you had not formally approved, that you needed to approve. And before we went to advertise it, we wanted to make sure that you approved the composition as well.
It doesn't, getting my mic or something, but I don't have one. It doesn't say motion to advertise on the...
It does not. It says motion to approve the ordinance, which will be a favorite advertising.
So we don't have to put that in there?
You can if you want. Or you could, we could do it another way. It's really good. Prefer to approve and advertise, but as long as you approve the ordinance, it's more about the composition. Your concern, if you remember, there's a lot of discussion and question about who's on this Board, what's their background, what's the composition, how long are they going to serve? So since that was never resolved, we thought it appropriate to put it back in front of you to approve. If you would also, if you're satisfied with what you have in front of you, also approve it to advertise, that certainly satisfies.
Thank you, Manager of the Board. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff?
So the composition of the Board, is that taken from anything specific, or was that taken from the uniform construction code?
It's taken from the code.
From the regulations with UCZ. And I just have one question, maybe I read through it, but I'm not sure I understood it. If somebody were to step down, admit one of these, that was in one of these categories, the five member board is made up of one person from each of these categories, is that correct?
Correct. I believe that's what the intent is, yes.
And if somebody steps down, whether it's a difficulty finding somebody in that category, can you fill it to somebody that meets the other requirements?
You would, at that point, well, if you can't find somebody in one of those categories who are, if it's impossible to find them, then technically you'd have to come back and amend your ordinance, but I think the idea is, the Board operates with one of the people in each of those five categories. If someone is missing, and you can't fill that role, it operates with the four. I will say this to the Board, in most of the places that I represent, in the last seventeen years, in one of my municipalities, about scanning the Board of Code Appeals existed in coal one time. It is not, it's not that frequent of a unit board, so.
Well, this points out, the idea of appearing in front of the County Board of Chumtan Township, right, if it has been the first time that they ever had a hearing.
Oh, it happens.
Will we have a solicitor, will a meeting solicitor, they have a solicitor assigned today?
They will. Normally, what most municipalities do is they wait until the first, they wait until the first appeal comes before them, and then they find someone to represent the Board.
Mr. President, litigation with the township...
Well, please, please, just make him, please sit down.
He should be refusing himself in this discussion.
Running with ignorance, please sit down. If it happens again, we will move on to the meeting. Thank you. Continue, Senator.
I think you're done.
I think I was, yes. Yeah, that's what most do. Normally, we would represent the township's position in front of the Board of Code Appeals, and then you go out and find someone else for the limited purpose of representing the Board of Code Appeals. Most municipalities don't appoint a solicitor until, until it's needed.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents?
So, I don't think, I think before, I thought we were talking about, you have a crack in the sidewalk, whether or not you have to fix that crack, or that crack is a ten. Barbie's out there, okay? Tonight, we saw that you have engineers, architect people with ten years' experience and experience managing those things. This is serious, this is codes that are exactly like what we just experienced, and that's why I think Mr. Barron has refused himself, because these codes, I'll try and talk louder, these codes are required by Pennsylvania law and many, there's a whole woven structure of codes and laws. We had a code official, we now have an engineering code official, that had long training over how those interwoven codes and laws work. And at the colonnade, it was at the behest of the solicitor who put those codes and laws aside and wrote a separate agreement. Okay? And that separate agreement was signed only by Mr. LaFever and not even approved by the rest of the Board, caused multiple, multiple lawsuits. So the reason was because the contractor, sitting right next to you, and the owner, and that particular team, were constantly trying to forego the various codes and laws that the Code Department said were important. You now want to have a team of five, I hope it's five or six on there, but five or six people approximately, who could sit down and say, no, you don't have to follow this code. Okay? Well, that's exactly what went on for the last four years in unbelievable litigation. And this, you know, that cost the township millions. It is not something that should be put aside. All of those laws should have been enforced as the code officials, and the code officials have other people they can consult. They could go to Labor and Industry and find out if they were right on or wrong, but not five people from the township who don't even have a legal structure under which they're working on. And they can just put those aside. This is wrong. We are legislating...
This is required by law.
It's required by law.
That we have a Board of Code Appeals. It is required by law.
But how it's going to be used, and I'm looking, I'm looking at these people on this Board of Code Appeals, and how it's going to be used. So I didn't know that, all right, that it's required by law.
I've never stopped you.
So that...
So I've never stopped you from not knowing something, and never stopped you.
Apparently, it never stops you either. Look at the colonnade.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay? So, yeah, I mean, really, I mean...
It's a narrative that everybody else has out there, the false narrative.
I'm going to what we do. I think you know.
Can you wrap it up?
Okay? So what we have here, okay, so if it's required by law to have a Board of Code Appeals, then somewhere, we need to have some judicious way that people can come in and ask for the codes and laws to be set aside. So how does that happen?
Thank you for your comments.
Can you explain that? Will you explain it after the meeting?
I'm going to have to comment on that. I think the ordinance that you're considering is very clear on the scope of authority, composition, and how it's going to be conducted. It is a Code of Appeals. And the reason they make so frequently is because there are very few times someone takes an appeal with a decision of holding a coalition. So the ordinance is very clear. Anyone who reads the ordinance will understand, it is the only thing that gives authority. And all actions have to be informed with the decision of the county.
So what's...
Very, very, Ms. Barron, so short answer is, Mr. President, short answer is, read the ordinance. And anyone who reads the ordinance should be able to understand what the authority is.
So, President, there's very little legal...
It's not, it's not a discussion. There is a question, you got an answer, please sit down.
Any other comments from the public? Any one, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item, ACL 2. This is a motion to approve the minor subdivision application of Horatio Rome, Jennifer Park, Scott Tylenant, and Jamie Frye for the property located at 936 Morden Road, and to approve all waiver requests as set forth more fully in resolution 1830. The waiver section of section 14627 of the Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance related to the installation of sidewalks is subject to a note being placed on the minor subdivision plan that the waiver is granted from the Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, section 14627, relating to installation of sidewalks on Morden Road, is granted only for the minor subdivision application of Horatio Rome, Jennifer Park, Scott Tylenant, and Jamie Frye, approved by resolution 1830 of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Any future work at 936 Morden Road that, one, requires subdivision that creates a buildable lot, and/or, two, requires land development approval, shall be required to install sidewalks and curbing on Morden Road in frontage of 936 Morden Road, and shall not be eligible for a waiver request. All other waiver requests are approved as requested, and I surrender.
Mr. Green is seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Vice President, call.
I just wanted to, I met with the two homeowners of the two properties related, they're both here, so they're on the same thing. These were product of discussions, we went through the same motion that was presented last year, or last month, with one minor change of just including for Morden Road for a few, that the sidewalks, there was a few years to build a block created, and with that, I just wanted to, they're here to have any objections or any questions to the Board, to the information unit.
We're fine with it. Nick Rose from Protract, we're fine with the...
Speaking, so did you stand up and identify yourself?
Our microphones are on, like, they have to speak up.
Nick Rose, Nick Rose from Protract Engineering, I'm the engineer for the applicant Horatio Rome. We are applying the resolution as it is prevented, as Mr. Frye noted, but you went over that wording, and we are applying the...
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? There are none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, item of unfinished business, Mr. President, ACL 3. This is to consider waiving of permit fees for the Salem Baptist Church, including construction permit, on-site stormwater management, and inspection fees, and I surrender.
Mr. Green is seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff?
I went to get them. Actually, I'm sure that I will have a comment, but I would prefer to wait until after the public has an opportunity to speak.
I'm moving to that next. Any comments from the public? I'm sorry, commissioner, first.
Sure, I still want to know, since there's stormwater management and inspection fees, can you have an idea of the number?
Manager of the Board, if you feel that you want the applicant to answer a question.
Your prerogative.
Okay, why don't we move right into the public comment and have the applicant address those issues, okay? Are there any other comments from commissioners? If there are none, the applicant, the pastor of the church is here in attendance, could you come and come to the podium, state your name, and trust for the record?
Certainly, thank you very much, Mr. President, and my name is Marshall Mitchell, pastor of Salem Baptist Church of Roslyn. Not just Jenkins Town any longer. And just before I give any perspective on the project, I want to thank you all for embracing us, and for opening your arms wide and brought to us. I sure have already met many of your constituents, because I'm sure as anyone who walks around town sees the seven or so people who many mornings are out walking around what I think is something of a hub of that community. Salem was founded in 1884, it's been in Jenkins Town since that time. It has always been a very good citizen of the community. It has invested in the borough of Jenkins Town in ways large and small, sometimes investing its integrity, sometimes just spending good old-fashioned greenbacks in local establishments like diners and restaurants. We buy a lot of our products from local vendors, and we intend to leave Jenkins Town, and we intend to do that in Roslyn, and spend our money on Eastern Road and throughout Abington Township. We're kind of unapologetic. Can I be heard? It helps to have a preacher's voice. But I've been unapologetic from the church's perspective about doing business where we live. And we have more members of our church, more parishioners in Willow Grove than Roslyn than we've ever had in Jenkins Town. And so we will be closer to our congregation, we'll be closer to our customers, if you will. We've made significant investments already in the land and city, we've made significant investments. We are totally doing a gut rehab on the school building, 2741 Woodland, and that will house the Coles Athletico, it will continue to house the Nexus School, which serves autistic children, and it will also serve a daycare. And so we are making investments in human capital. That won't stop. That's going to be ongoing, because that is literally in the DNA of this church. That's what it has done in Philadelphia community, and that's what it has done in Jenkins Town. When we bought the church from St. John McCross and Queen of Peace, and ultimately the archdiocese of the city of Philadelphia, we were not satisfied with where the conditions were. And so we are investing enormous sums of money to improve the infrastructure, the wiring, the roof. I never knew how expensive a roof could be. We are air conditioning the gymnasium. We are putting in about $500,000 worth of wiring, because the world has changed since 1950s. And we know people are charging cell phones, they've got smart boards, we'll be using them, most of us here wrote on tallboards. And so we've got to make that kind of investment in infrastructure. Where we are able to, we are hiring local vendors. The trees that were deceased and needed to be taken down, we're using local hooks. We intend to continue to do that. And so that's in the DNA of who we are as a congregation. Our first activity, if I'm going too long, just say amen, and I'll shut up.
Do I have a three-minute speaking limit?
Three-minute speaking limit, all right, I'll get ready to close. If you, if you look at what is happening in the community at large, churches are retreating. And when we bought this church, we didn't buy it just to worship on Sunday. That's not what our church does. We think the best times of worship happen Monday through Saturday, when you get a chance to make an investment in kids with autism, and make sure they're in the kind of community and kind of building that they're in. Make sure parents have access to affordable and solid and world-class daycare, because they're going to go into a world-class public school system. If you think about Chief Malloy and others who keep living good, Chief Kelly, I'm not a stranger to them. This congregation's not a stranger to them. We think we are among the best people in Abington, and I'm glad to be added to that number. And so we'll continue to add to what happens in this community, we'll continue to make it better. We will even have doggy scooper uppers, so that when people walk around the football field, they'll be able to pick up their mess, or their dog's mess. And I'm glad to, just glad to be here, Mr. President.
Thank you, President. Before we ask any questions, is there anyone else from the church who wants to make a brief comment? Yes, Mr. Speaker.
All right, I allow. I brought this flower, and it's from an area around the veteran, and it is a gladiolus.
Mr. Speaker, can I get it off a second? I'll recall some, so, I was going to ask you to come and speak, but you see...
I'll get there.
I see you have a cane, is that...
No, I'll get there.
Okay. But don't step on the cane as you stand up.
Well, I'm assuming we get enough money to pay for it. That's the way to handle it. Margaret Penderbain, I grew up in Abington, and every time I came to hear you speak, it's always trying to bring peace. At first hand, you're looking for a new chief of police, and it was raining and tanning. But I really believe, I brought this flower, this is the example from the area of the veteran, it's a gladiolus. It grows up, and it points like a spear. The eye of the bay, we can have peace if we just get to what we really want, and stop mucking around and messing with it. At the last minute, the people from our congregation, this lady here drives a bus from Abington Township, and she lives right across the street from the church. So the days that I can even go there and check this working, she'll call me, she said they're not doing bus today, it's too hot. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Any other comments from the public?
Overall, with your advice, when you can, you all have an email from me, and you have heard me on this issue before. I think the church members are probably all wonderful people, almost all. One of them called me Whitey all through a meeting one time. So perhaps you'd like to stand up? So perhaps you'd like to stand up and recognize yourself, but probably not. But I think probably the members in this church were probably not part of...
Mr. Speaker, kids in the public, please.
Yes. Members of this church were probably not part of the bad stuff that happened before, but some very bad stuff happened before. So we have a couple of issues here. One, we've got separation of church and state, to tax me and to have my money get unequally distributed to a church. Number two, although they do good things in the community, so does every other business bring people to...they may not be as big, they may not have 1,200 members that every week are involved, but all of those businesses do. And so you're setting a precedent here where if this business, or church, or whatever entity it is, can have that benefit, why can't the others have that benefit? Yes, we welcome them, and we welcome the money that they spend in the township, and we welcome the good deeds that they do, and we hope there's many of them. But we also have many others that do that. This is not what we do, is tax people and then give it to others. Then the next question is, where are the needs for that money that you're deciding is going to go to this church that has 1,200 members? And for them, that probably would not be a tremendous struggle. They could tell fundraisers, they can do a lot of things.
Well, I think we're pointing to clarification, nobody's giving them.
Well, yeah, you are, okay? Yes, you are. When you waive a fee, that fee doesn't get paid, and there are that many fewer taxes to do things like, for instance, the flooding that we talked about. I mean, I would like to know, I'd ask, I'd like to know, was that creek cleared out? So that that family that was before you, last month, week, whatever it was, couple weeks ago, and said that they were in danger of flooding every time the rain, did that creek get cleaned out? Is it a matter of money? Are the trees dying at Alphabell? Is it a matter of money?
Can you keep the comments addressed to someone?
Well, I'm saying that this is not right, to tax the people with this calendar and to gift it. And as you know, there is another issue here, and that is whoever you gift it to becomes a very good friend. So this, they support the Commissioners. So it becomes what we call walking around money, okay? So in other words, I can give you $100,000 off your bill here, okay? We have to pay the man who does the inspections, and then all the work goes into the permit. Somebody has to pay that. If they don't pay it, I'm going to pay it. And that's not right, okay?
Three minutes, well, thank you, sir.
So I appreciate that they're here, that's wonderful. They shouldn't be asking for extras, and they had to pay a great deal of money for ruining a man's reputation when they asked for extras before.
But to this point of my...I think the comment you made earlier, repeat the issue, it's not necessary, and this was the right venue for that. So thank you very much.
So, but there's a great...
Any other comments?
There's a great problem with what was done before, and they're not asking for favors from us.
Three minutes? Oh, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Dennis, and my husband is Alvin, and we've lived in this township for over 70 years. Been in our home for 52 years, right here on Lockley Avenue. We love Abington Township. We went to school here, we have four daughters that graduated from Abington School, three granddaughters that graduated from Abington School. So we're very proud of this community, and we're very proud of this boy, we've watched him over the years. We work in this community as a volunteer, my husband works on the poles, I'm a member of the Women's Board of Abington Hospitals. So we would just like to thank you for cooperating with us.
Amen.
And the things that we're going to bring to our community, just not the Salem Baptist Church, it's for Abington community, a community that we're very proud of, that we work so closely together as people. So I just wanted to give you a little background on it. As a member there for 40 years at Salem Baptist Church, we're very happy to join Abington community and join all of you who is cooperating and making this a success for our community. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, Mr. President, and fellow members of the board of Commissioners of Abington Township. My name is Anthony Lucker. I'm primarily a lifelong resident of Abington Township. I've spent over 35 years of my life in this township, and I'm happy to say that and stand before you and further echo the sentiments that have already been shared. First and foremost, the Salem Baptist Church is a church of valid walls. What I mean by saying that is we go far beyond just the traditional Sunday prayer. We have two services each and every Sunday. We are a seven-day-a-week operation, one who focuses on outreach, outreach to the community, because part of our mission is to build strategic partnerships. And within the context of those strategic partnerships, that is doing work with other nonprofit agencies, Abington Township, the Abington School District, and all of the other entities that are providing services to the marginalized, the disenfranchised, and the community as a whole. So we are glad to be current residents and future residents of this township. We look forward to the support of this township, and we thank you so much for hearing us this evening.
Any other comments from the public? If there's no comments from the public, I'll turn it back over to the comments from Commissioners.
Just like to make one.
Speak up.
I would like to make one comment or statement. Right now, my blood is kind of boiling, so I'm going to try to control myself. This is a church, it's a house of God. So what is the problem with that? It's about religion, about our roots, how we grew up with religion. Religion is the most important thing of our lives today. Everything we have today that we have, that we own, that we share, is from Christ himself. What's the problem?
That we shouldn't.
Okay, we're giving back to Christ by this, okay? So that's all I'm going to say. It's a house of God.
Commissioner, speak.
Coming from, I guess, someone of opposite expectation, coming out of a very spiritual person, that the new location of Salem Baptist Church is not in the ward I represent, it's a couple wards over, but I know the amazing work, the amazing community focus of Salem Baptist Church, of where I come from, in town, in Roslyn. And I know from my constituents who are congregants, they're definitely going to appreciate the shorter drive. So I would like to say, on behalf of, on behalf of my massive secular folks, and on behalf of the people who are led, welcome Salem Baptist Church of Abington Township.
Thank you, President Lucker. I myself am also supportive of this, but in fairness to Commissioner Glesby, I don't think her question was answered yet from the outset of the amount of what we're talking about here. Can I just leave it there?
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw, would you...
Yeah. Well, sort of, I want to remind everybody that this is...I want to remind everybody with this unfinished business, because we did talk about this at the last meeting. And at that time, there was both this agenda item and also one for the Roslyn PFW. And the statement I made, I think some of the other Commissioners at that point, was because we hadn't really clearly identified what we were going to be doing with waiving of permit fees, that we would almost, I guess you could say, grandfather these two in. This one got moved forward, because we didn't have the amounts available. And I think we're going to have those just a few minutes, I hope. We did go ahead and pass the one for the PFW. So I'm also willing to church there, I know you do good things, but I want to, for myself anyway, say that, you know, the comment was made about setting a precedent and other churches coming forward. Some churches do good things, some maybe not so good things, but in future, I will not be voting for any waivers of fees. In fact, they're not, from what we talked about last time, they won't even be coming up in front of the board anymore. So this is the final sign that that will be coming up, as we have it up right now, as it stands. So I just want to remind everybody of that, or go ahead and, I guess, do the numbers for them.
All right. Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I'd like to clear something up. It's been stated that this is a precedent. It is certainly not. We have waived construction fees for religious organizations in the past. The most recent, in my memory, is the Baptist Church of the First Pressmont Baptist Church. The fees were waived for their reconstruction and their construction after their fire. So this is certainly not a precedent. I'd like to clear up something else. Yes?
Sorry, that's not what I said about the question.
No, no, I was addressing you. I was addressing an earlier speaker.
You were looking over here, and I thought that...
I'm looking at everybody. I'm looking at everybody. Also, as Commissioner Spiegelman said, that this is not in the ward that he represents, well, it is in the ward that I represent. And the reason that I'm advocating is because it's in the ward that I represent, and I am so proud to be your Commissioner. Also, also, it's been stated that I had conflict of interest because of Abington Pow. Abington Pow has already been in that building, and the negotiations with Abington Pow and the rent that Abington Pow are we paying are long past. We're going to be in that building, no matter what this vote...Abington Pow is going to be in that building, no matter what this vote comes out tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Lewis?
And I appreciate, I mean, I, Salem Baptist Church is wonderful, I know Cheltenham, you all know, Cheltenham Baptist Church, Way Church, Alpeach, I understand all that. I'm just struggling with, I don't have a number, and it would be a lot of money, because it's every taxpayer event, it's a day. So I'd be glad to have something.
Shall I have a tip?
And there is a policy, isn't there?
Okay. I imagine, if you want to...
If you recall...
First item issue, or should I call the capacity?
Sorry. Looking up to you.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
As you recall from discussion, there was a number that was given for this phase. When I was asked, what is the amount of permit? I said, "I cannot give you precise and exact number in total, because it's our understanding that this is coming phases, and we don't know when phase two is going to come, how much the cost of the construction is going to be." Therefore, we can't tell you what that amount is. So you're deciding, you know, today, based on what we have, and which you heard, is somewhere in the area of $63,000. But I can't tell you what the next phase is going to cost. So your decision is based upon your beliefs as to whether or not those fees, which may be as high as $50,000 to $100,000, or $63,000, we don't know, because we do not know what that phase is going to be, and when that's going to come in, and perhaps the pastor can address that. But I can't give you, in all honesty, a total number for all phases of the church. I can tell you, today, it's approximately $63,000.
Would the pastor want to... Anything that's already been said? Or someone from the church?
My name is John Mitchell, I'm a consultant, a real estate consultant, helping church with the construction management. And so we divided up, due to the banking situation that we have, we divided up the church renovation into phases. The first phase is the school. The school needed the most amount of work. There was a Nexus School that houses about 20 autistic kids that were literally working in environments that had extension cords, no air conditioning at all in the building. And so that portion alone, we're putting in almost $5,000, $500,000, sorry, just in the work in that facility, just for those 20 kids, about $500,000 of that's going in. We're doing the other thing with Pow, and we're doing the other thing with the love. When we talk about stormwater management, that building has been falling apart, because there's tons of water that is actually draining in three-quarters of the building, actually within the building, and actually going back into the, eroding, the surrounding ground and surrounding. And so we're putting in almost $360,000 is the cost of the roof in that alone. So the school alone, before we even get to the exterior of the building, we're putting in $1.5 million dollars before you can even see anything as you drive by. The upgrade in the power, we're putting in, I think it's 30 or almost 40 split pack air conditioning units in, and this is all for the kids. This is all for Pow, this is all for Nexus. So this isn't really going to the church. This is going to taxpayers, this is going to kids who've been in schools, this is going to the community. So when you look at that, you know, it's almost the $60,000 fees, we're going to be investing over time, probably almost $5 million in construction work into the entire site. Right now, we're working on the school building, it's our first priority. It just started demolition on parts of the sanctuary, so that we can potentially move and start worshiping there. And then we're converting the old convent into a senior center, community senior center. The last thing we're doing, which is not even, no permits have been submitted for this at all, is our actual administration building. So the actual room in a housing that the pastor and finance committee and all of them will be sitting in, we don't have the money for that yet, and we have not issued permits for it, so in that renovation. So most of the renovations that we put permits in, and after the fees we waived, all portions of the campuses we call it, that are all public, and open to public.
Yeah, there's one.
So hopefully that answers a few more questions, going exactly where and why we're asking for some of these things to be there.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Based on what you just told us, is most of your, it's up at about $1.25 million, just in the phase that you're addressing now?
The school, the school building. We're doing $2.7 million in this first phase. And then the second phase, to finish off the senior center, and then we really don't even have any phase on the horizon for doing the administration building.
So you have not even got to the sanctuary yet?
No, we literally just started tearing down a few walls as the next month, month and a half, two said we started back, so I walked back to that, so we just started back. Our main concern is the school up and running, and get that ready. And with the transition of the Nexus School and having some downtime in the summer, we're actually spending overtime running everything else, if they can actually, when they start back up by September 1st, they start back up on the air conditioning building and the new LED lights and the internet access. We did, I don't even know the numbers, regardless of how they're building, but asbestos abatement, we probably put over at least $150,000 just to get asbestos out of the building, so these kids can have a good school to actually operate in.
Okay, thank you. My, just for my, just looking at, it's surprising, I think, just putting that out, it seems like it's almost impossible at this juncture to give us an overall figure because of the magnitude of what you're taking on. It sounds like it's a whole, this is, I think, a Commissioner, a couple Commissioners know the church and the facilities surrounding it, but they're talking about a whole campus renovation, so to me, it'd be kind of a tough job to try to give us a hardcore number to give us, based on the magnitude of what you're going to tackle. So I'm looking at it as, I think, in the essence of time, it might take them a year or maybe more to give us the number we're looking for. So it seems to me like, it's either we give it all and just go ahead and it's all, the fees are all or nothing, so I don't think you're going to get the number that you're trying to get in the next 30 minutes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, I honestly, because I appreciate everything, everything you're doing. I go to know on the PFW, because I just felt that, you know, everybody else was starting to, you know, do things not according to the policy. And so if I don't go in that direction, it has nothing to do with Salem Baptist Church, because we work the policy, and we don't have a number. I also, I was born in that hospital, so you know that hospital, it's pretty early. And, you know, I understand everything. And, you know, I understand everything you're doing and it's wonderful and I appreciate it.
I want to make one other observation, since you don't think that this is kind of an ever-growing process. The only portion of the project that we haven't submitted permits for at this point in time is under $500,000. So we took permits in for all of the major buildings at this point in time. The only building we have not put permits in that's not included, that would not be impacted by the $60,000 would be the administration building, which we're only estimating to do about $500,000.
That's the average, right? That's the common average?
That's correct.
That's the common average.
Yeah. So the permits, we've already committed in front of the township now, the school, which is about $1.5 million in its own right. Let's say that the sanctuary is another, maybe a million dollars. And then you have the convent in our lower level banquet hall, which would probably be another probably million dollars on that. So that is a total, that's 80% of the project. We have not, because we haven't figured out what we're going to do with the item building yet, and that's a building that we're at least concerned about because it's not in the public eye. In that estimate, which we can share with you guys, that estimate is less than $500,000 to do all renovations for that. We have not raised the funds for that and we decided not to permit it for that because that's, we don't know if we're going to go ahead with that work or not. Because we can almost live in that building as it stands. So there won't be this ongoing development and all these other projects. You guys pretty much have about 75, about 80% of the entire project cost.
That's what I was going to ask you. It seems like it's more fundamental that we've gotten the bulk of what you're doing.
Exactly.
Very exact. Commissioner Schreiber?
So if we vote on the permits that are out now, just somewhere around $63,000, we can comfortably vote on that tonight and not necessarily, and separate it out if we choose to, so that if you have permits in the future, you will be paying them on your own, if you say it's not going to be that much?
Correct.
So we can just keep that $63,000?
I would like to ask you.
Honestly, that's what's being requested. I tell you what is being requested is waiving all permit fees on the project, those that have been submitted and those that will be submitted.
I'm just going to speak for myself because I do think that's going to be the big thing in the community, but I have a hard time voting for something when I don't know what that number is. And I understand that this is the bulk of it, but if something else happens or whatever and then it keeps going up, then we're stuck for it. If we say that we are going to vote for permit fees no matter what they are, that's where I am.
Well, our consultant is in a unique position with me because I performed his marriage and I know that his wife will have something to say if they put the pastor in jeopardy. But I trust his numbers and he has said, this is three-fourths, not three-fifths, but three-fourths of what the load would be. And I guess I would say, if you can help us on, by taking that 63 or 67 number, 63, let's take your lower number and take one-fourth of that and add that to it. I think if his numbers are good, I know his marriage is sound, I think we ought to be able to figure that out as.
You say that we can cap it at that, so we have to?
That is what I'm suggesting, but I would never tell this group what to do.
We can do that, we know.
And you, can you cap it?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yes, yes, you can. That is what the board majority wants to do, yes. But we don't, we don't, I don't think we have a solid number right now. But again, the board majority can do it, the board wants to do it.
Mr. President? No, Commissioner Thompson.
I'm just following up on Commissioner Schreiber's question. I as well, I'm the more comfortable kind of putting a vote forward for this number that we don't really understand. I understand that you have one more phase coming up, an architect will see one more phase going to, it's worth three more phases. There's a lot of unforeseen costs that come up in construction. And I just, I'm wondering if we can just vote on the permits that have been submitted and then deal with the rest as they come along. Would that be problematic in this direction?
Well, as we know that there will be certainly more fees because one of the things, as you say, construction costs through the road, nobody has come to me yet to know it's going to be much less than you thought. And we're investing a lot of money in children who are not ours. They don't belong to our church, they belong to all of us. And so what we're doing is we're putting our money where our belief is. There aren't many people today who are willing to do that. There are many people who are willing to invest in the public sector, intermediate unit. Some of these children are going to be in a much, all of these children are going to be in a much better school. And as a community, if we can all kick in and put our shoulders to the millstone together, I think we'll be stronger. And we're taking a lot of risk and I guess we're asking you to take some risk with us and on us for our children. And so for three-fourths of the way there, I'd say, hey, let's all align and get the last fourth of the way there, knowing it's coming. You're an architect, you know how this works, then I can teach you about meteorology if you can teach me about AIA.
Mr. President, and I'm going to echo what Commissioner Schreiber said, but this is, I absolutely agree with Commissioner Schreiber's statement. This really is the last of these fee waivers that we're considering. So I guess it's appropriate to go over a bit into the weeds on this. But if we're really looking at 63 as three-fourths, extrapolating that out, that would suggest 84 as 100%. If we did set, say, a not-to-exceed of 85, that would probably comfortably cover, you know, everything for the future and then we can sort of move on, you know, past the era of few waivers into the era of no fee waivers, but the church would be covered. That's just, just throwing that out there numerically.
Is your, Commissioner Rockland?
I mean, with all due respect to Commissioner Stevelman, who I've got a ridiculous amount of respect for, are we going to keep coming back every four, five, eight grand? I mean, if we're voting for this, we're voting for this for the reasons we're voting for it or we're not. And to me, all the information has been provided by the members of our community to us aside from those numbers. So if we're going to give leeway, which frankly, I think we should vote as it is, but if the board is so inclined to do that, then giving them whatever that would be, anywhere from $14,000 to $22,000 more, I think, I would find it hard to believe that members of this board would approve $85,000 but not $94,000. So if we're going to do that for the sake of, I think, the sanity of the church and the sanity of the members of this board, we would have to give a little bit more leeway. I can say I'm very much so inclined to vote in favor of this waiver, so my perspective on it may be a little different than other members of this board, but I don't think that we should keep going back and forth on, should we make it, we approved them up to 70, we approved them up to 84. And I know and live in the same world of construction professionally that Commissioner Thompson does, and costs go up, they never, almost never ever go down. And I think if we're, I mean, my point is, and maybe I'm taking too long to make it, I think that either we're going to have to give a larger discrepancy for how much more it would be, because if that 25% is going to be higher, it could be 50% higher, you might want to look at $120,000 as a cap. Or let's just vote for it and approve it because I don't think, I may be wrong, that members of the board are going to change their vote over another 15,000 or 20,000 in waiver. But that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Schreiber?
So if it's, if we said, if it's $85,000 about to nine-year, to your point, it wouldn't come back to us, right? I mean, the church would just, would come up with that other $5,000 or an apartment or, I mean, we're cap it, we're cap it, I guess.
They'd still?
Whatever number it is.
Not to speak out here.
So it would be coming back every month, I think this would be it.
Unless we, I would imagine that unless we put that in the language that they can't come back, but otherwise they wouldn't be able to come back based on, you know, our interpretation of the grandfathering or if it were, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that I think we can, we can probably make this easier than we are making it.
Okay, Commissioner, I think Commissioner Rockland, talk as a client.
I'd vote for it as it is, but if we need to change to put a cap in to get passage, I'll all for that. I would just make it a hundred grand, you know, be done with it. I agree with Commissioner Rockland's point. You know, if you're going to do it, you're doing it. You're giving them a waiver on their fees for their construction project. I'm willing to do it all, but if we want to cap it at a hundred grand, then why don't we just make it a hundred grand, that'll get it to a buffer.
Just a point of procedure. If you're going to put a cap in, because you have to be a motion and a second and a vote on that cap, then you'll go back to your original motion to approve. So if you want a cap, you have to, you need a motion to do so. Because what's on the floor right now is to approve the fees.
Commissioner, go.
I made that motion to amend the present motion and put a cap of $100,000 on the fee waiver.
Second. Remove the second and the comments from Commissioners. All those in favor? Aye. Close. That motion passes. Now we have the floor on the original motion.
You said the amended motion.
Amended. Okay, everyone count to that despite, okay, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Okay. So in summary, so everyone's mind's clear, we fully agree, the motion that was approved was for a cap of $100,000. Mr. President, that concludes the unfinished business. Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
That's it, we're not waiting fees. We are not waiting fees.
Doors. So, Mr. President? So, I have hearing, I have hearing the majority say that the fee waiver policy is ended, which means that I will not be bringing requests for fee waivers to this board without a permit. This should technically, you know, there's questions.
No motion and no second, so a little nod of the head would be helpful.
Is that official, nod of the head?
Could you repeat quick so we can hear what you said?
The discussion of the board at this time is that it will no longer waive any fees, which is a current ordinance and policies. Therefore, since the majority has affirmed by a nod of the head, I will not be bringing any fee waiver requests to them on the agenda unless the majority tells me otherwise.
You think that's not something that has to be a policy?
The existing policy is not. Somebody else did this. I don't want to be honest with the board, but can you just make a statement what is going to be as when we leave here? What has been agreed on? I appreciate that, thank you. For the clarification. Yes, sir.
Do you want me to add something? Salem Baptist Church fees, as indicated on this paper, will be waived up to an amount not to exceed $100,000. So whatever the permit fees are and the other fees as indicated here, as long as they will be approved up to $100,000. So if whatever church does has permit fees that are $125,000, we are not going above $100,000.
And we use you.
We is the township.
I thought it was you.
Not we.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the faculty that you want to lead or do a study for?
I just want to thank you both. You both are wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. President, can Pastor Mitchell do all of his speaking from now on? When he speaks, it's as if the sound system is no longer broken.
Okay, at this time, who wants to do this?
While we're pushing the top back up for the public. Thank you, President. The board's committee has four layers of new decisions starting with GW2. And this is a motion to adopt resolution 15 dash 031, authorizing the approval of the township manager to submit the application, got that statement approved with PenDOT, and signed his application and only asked to introduce the power to the township.
Second. Can you be the secretary of the council? Staff? Any for President, here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, pass.
Thank you. Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Thompson. And this is a motion to authorize the extension of the sanctuary's time cost.
Second, can you be the secretary of the council?
Mr. President, this is in my board, but I happen to know Commissioner Klein worked hard on this, I believe, for the concert with the residents there. Matter of safety for the schoolchildren, offered to be right along my nearest school. And I believe these matters will be corrected upon one, which would require the local support of this and the resident, they would like to, for a client report.
For clarification, for those who are watching, Commissioner Klein had to excuse us for some business that he had to attend to. So, Commissioner Sanchez is keeping him around the area, I'm sure he will clear that. Anyone else, Commissioner Schreiber?
So this, this particular agenda item is actually adjacent to my ward and I know the area very well as a matter of fact. And anything to protect the safety of the individuals, pedestrians, and the schoolchildren, this is important. And I would encourage Commissioner Sanchez and I'm sure Commissioner Klein would really support that as well, but this is important. That's an intersection, so we need, that's actually an area with a lot of high-speed traffic that really needs to be protected, especially pedestrians and the children. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Any other Council Commissioners? The staff, the audience. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, pass.
Thank you. Next, this is GW5, presents a motion to adopt resolution 15 dash 033, authorizing the approval of extension of time to completion of work and services under Part II Final Design of the Original Engineering Agreement with supplements thereto with the project engineer, Noma Associates Incorporated, to the road reconstruction project located along or near the State Route 2034, Bishop Road, section MGI R slash W, and or State Route 2036, Tyson Avenue, section MGI R slash W, federal project number X 064133-L240, designated Department of Transportation project, M E M S 57865, and that's all.
Remove the second, Council Commissioners, staff, audience, if any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, pass.
Thank you. And the GW6, these are two separate motions put out here together, is one separate? This is a motion to approve resolution number 15 dash 035, a resolution authorizing submission for the grant application for the 2018 round of the county transportation program to obtain $53,570 in the county transportation program to match the local funding commitment for the Greenport Road, Washington Lane, and Jenkins Town Road, meeting house road, traffic signal modification project. And there's also a motion to approve resolution number 18 dash 036, a resolution authorizing submission for the grant application for the 2018 round of the county transportation program to obtain $37,310 from the county transportation program to match the local funding commitment for Fitzwater Town Road and Wiggan Road slash North Oak Road, traffic signal modification project, and I so move it.
Second, remove your secretary, any Council Commissioners?
This is the local hatch. This is the local hatch. The anti-computer from Noma Associates, the traffic manager here. This is part of, there's no match requirement for this, this is actually paying part of your match of a grant that you receive for these two locations. The Greenco grant from PenDOT, so you have the, the 20%, you already gave the 20% of those two, the county's allowed to get 10% back from the county for that match, so that's So that's what this is.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Mr. President, that's the first part. I'm sure the second part as well is getting a much-needed transformative improvement project, at least for the Greenwood and Chucky Town, uh, Meeting House signal projects are fully in favor of this and that.
Any other comments from commissioners? And staff?
Thank you. Ditto on the second part of this.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? From staff, from the audience? Are there none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion passes. At this time, I would like to take over to Commissioner Sanchez. Initiative a public manning of the situation.
Mr. President, back again for a new business in the Assembly of the Government and Minutes Committee. This is ACL four, consider amending ordinance two zero five five, amending chapter 108, nuisances, section 12, weeds, to add enforcement provisions, bamboo regulations.
The move is seconded. Is anyone in the explanation of this? Commissioner in favor?
So, is it in the A D N? No. What's the A D N? This is on the agenda for you to discuss the issue of enforcement, whether frankly, is there a possibility of enforcement of that? Mr. Salamak from Engineering College, Mark is here to talk about it. And I believe Commissioner Myers has been in particular very troubled by the fact that there are areas where we cannot, property owners very simply cannot afford to alleviate or eradicate the bamboo that's permeating up to other properties. We don't have the ability to go in and remove it and place a weed in certain cases because there's not enough equity in the home for us to do so. So the issue, and I'll stop here and turn it over to the, to the commissioners who have this issue. The issue is, we have the workups to regulate bamboo, but we have no way or no methodology we can find to enforce those regulations.
May I take it from there? Thank you. Um, just a, just a little scenario, and this may exist in other properties in the township. We have a property that is, almost the entire backyard is bamboo. The current owner of the property did not plant that, and that's been confirmed by neighbors. However, they do own the property, and now the bamboo over time, and I have to say especially this summer, there's a certain combination of humidity and heat that the traveling bamboo really travels. It is now, because it's in her backyard, it is now affecting four neighbors, two sides and two backs. So obviously, the neighbors want this gone. In working with the homeowner, they are unable to afford this. We, the township, got estimates on removal, and according to my law, Jim, between 10 and 15...
15 to 18.
15 to 18,000. Uh, the current retired disabled homeowner cannot afford that. The idea was put forward, could we, could we have it done and lean the home, which code enforcement has done that in other cases, not necessarily with bamboo. However, as the manager stated, there's not enough equity in the home to do that at all. So this is, the ordinance we have is fine, but it doesn't go far enough, and that's where we need, we need to take this to go a little further. So if we take, if we cite the homeowner, take them to court, then it becomes the judge's problem to decide what to do when they hear this dilemma. And I think we have not taken this quite far enough. It's very easy to say the homeowner has to remove it, but the cost is incredible.
So that is a question, uh, unless maybe, for verification for those watching, maybe could you only do this Jim Salamak to you?
Yes, this is Jim Salamak, one of our property maintenance inspectors.
Okay, my question is, I have, I've just got an email from a resident in my board who's complaining about bamboo from resident David George eight. And now if we pass this, what does that allow you to do now?
Well, excuse me, it allows us to assist the property owner if it is indeed noted that they can't afford to spend eight to 10, $12,000 to remove the bamboo. Added to that, though, is that the people that the bamboo has spread to, they now have a problem that they have to remediate the bamboo. Excuse me, this one.
So now, if we enact this, how do the air, the neighbors where this bamboo has encroached to, help them with remediation, or will it?
I don't believe it will. It'll still be a problem for them. Now how to take care of the bamboo?
At their own rights.
Correct.
But it will help the person who resides at the residence where the bamboo is emanating, growing and emitting from.
Correct.
Commissioner Lucker, if I could, just so we can clear up some confusion, there's not an amended ordinance in front of you this evening. What you have in your packet is the existing ordinance that we passed a few years ago. Um, the existing ordinance allows for us, when bamboo is encroaching from a private property onto township property, it allows us to remove that bamboo and then to lean the property owner who, whose property the bamboo was coming from. Uh, when the discussions were had regarding this ordinance, commissioners by and large were clear that we didn't want the township getting involved in disputes between two private property owners. So we did not take on any enforcement when the dispute is between two private property owners. The ordinance is written simply to allow us to have a cause of action when it encroaches onto our property. So if the board now wants to get involved in disputes between private property owners, the ordinance would need to be amended in that regard, and then there would need to be amendments regarding how you're going to lean the property. And so what knows what, but it still won't address the fact that, as Commissioner Myers said, this one property is, will, it's unlikely we would get this money, money back if we leaned the property, because there's no equity in the property, and we would not be in first position after we leaned the property.
So if we pass this, and then this... And further, what's, what's in front of you is primarily for the question of Commissioner Myers, but I believe Mr. Salamak has other areas of the board where the same problem exists. So the question that's in front of you, there is no action for you to vote on? It's just simply to whether or not you want to consider creating an amendment, and what would that amendment be, to regulate bamboo? That, that's the point of the discussion. That's why it simply says consider. Do you want to consider making this regulation and start a dialogue and discussion as to what that amendment should be?
And I think this would help in your case. You need some assistance.
We do need assistance, please.
In what form are we talking in? I mean, bamboo is not an easy thing to eradicate. You have to go into the properties and dig down and remove the roots and potentially go in, install steel plates or plastic plates to stop the roots from going in. I mean, this is no different than Storms over issue that we had. Where, where does, where does our responsibility end? We go on the private property, then everything, every, every portion of the property we touch, with whatever we're doing, we're gonna come.
It's not really where our responsibility ends. Our responsibility never begins.
No, no, I'm saying...
Because we don't go on the private property and, and take care of disputes between private property owners. The, we're talking about bamboo, but the closest, the most analogous situation, and we have this constantly, as many of you know, is with trees overhanging from one private property owner, a private property onto another private property. They want us to go in and cut them down or to trim them back, and we don't have the authority to do that because it is a dispute between private property owners. So if you create a situation where we are now going to involve ourselves with bamboo, then the, I'm not sure how much bamboo is in the township.
Is that what we're talking about, actually going in and assisting them in eradicating this, or just providing funding to have that happen?
Well, there's, there's a, a part of the current ordinance that says the person with bamboo on their property has to maintain a better property law. So currently, obviously, that's not happening, but it's growing to other private property, private properties. So I believe our current ordinance requires us to take action through the property owner who allows this bamboo to grow over onto a neighboring property. Or, I may be correct.
You might be. It's when it comes onto our property. But what the ordinance says, you can't allow your bamboo to encroach onto someone else's property, but if it does, it's still primarily a dispute between two property owners. And again, I'll, I won't try to pretend that I remember this. Luckily, Lauren is much younger than I and has a much better memory. Uh, she recalls the discussion regarding the passing of this ordinance, and the board did not want to get involved into going on to private property to start digging up bamboo and to start dealing with this issue.
And the issue that's happening is that those neighbors who now have the bamboo encroaching upon their property from the neighbor's property comes Mr. Salamak in the code department and say, what are you going to do about this?
Right.
And then when we say it's a private property matter, and you, and they find out that the other property owner has no ability to eradicate or remove the bamboo, that doesn't stop those calls going to the code department or to the board commissioners. And the question is, is there anything that can be done regulatory perspective by the township to assist those property owners who have bamboo encroaching upon their property by someone who is not in a position to remove them at that stage?
So what's the assistance?
I'm just telling you the issue.
No, no, I'm sorry. But what's the assistance? What assistance have they given the property? Is it money? Is it actual, for lack of a better term, construction?
At this point, we give them no assistance. And I think that's what some of this is...
Speak up, Amy.
I, I said at this point, we give them no assistance.
You give them no assistance?
No assistance.
Well, have, have any of these cases going to the local district, magistrates?
Yes, we have one in court now. And again, the judge says the person can't afford to remove the bamboo. What would the township like to do? Finding that property owner $1,000 is not going to resolve the bamboo issue.
That's a very expensive... So he's, so it's just injustice in this case of bouncing it back on the township?
Basically, yes.
And now we're, the ball's back to the octagon. We have nothing to hit it with.
Correct.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Well, actually, our, our existing ordinance under letter F does allow the township at its discretion to go in and, and take action. So actually, we can enter onto a private property. Um, the bamboo owner shall be liable and responsible to the township for all costs incurred in removing the bamboo... Oh, that's from the township property. Forgive me, forgive me.
I think, I think the sticky point is private property is private.
Tell me about the list of properties that's attached to it. These are known problem properties?
These are calls that come into the township from neighbors complaining about bamboo coming onto their property from neighboring property.
So these property owners know that they're on this list right now?
They have all been contacted at one point of that.
Correct. One of my residents, she's been trying to get the township to give her a yes, the issue is closed on her property, or no, the issue is not closed on her property. I haven't seen a confirmation or denial that the issue is closed, but her name is on, her address is on this list, and I'm really kind of concerned about that.
Okay. And I believe this one will look the script?
Right.
There's actually a discrepancy as the plan, the house to the left was vacant a lot of years. I believe in 2010, it was clear that the house was still on it. Uh, the people to the right are saying that the bamboo was there and it was a vacant lot and has since grown over to the property. At this point, we're not even sure where the bamboo originated from.
But I have a property owner that's really making an effort to try to mitigate the situation. And my understanding is that if she can afford to, she's gonna get me if the township comes in and does the work.
Well, right now, there are, is no mechanism for the township to come in and do the work. This is our conundrum, so to speak. When residents call us and say, well, what are you gonna do? And we say, there's nothing that we can do. It's between you and your neighbor. But that doesn't stop people from calling and making complaints daily.
My voice is speaking. Um, I certainly, I have a couple of these, not, not exactly, certainly not exactly the situation. Commissioner Myers described it hot, but there are a couple of these in the order of that. I'm wondering, Jim, have there been any cases where a neighbor has, where there's, you know, a dispute about bamboo across private property, and a neighbor has taken another neighbor to court and used the township ordinance as, as evidence? Not, nothing, nothing to do with the township's responsibility, but as evidence to get the judge to find in their favor and compel the other neighbor to remediate the matter?
Not, not aware of that.
Is there anything I would recommend from doing that?
Nothing. Even if there wasn't a township ordinance, if something from your neighbor's property, if you plant an invasive weed of some sort, or if you plant a tree, and it encroaches on your neighbor's property, you're allowed to take action. You're allowed to self-help, even if you want to. The law allows one property owner to trim a tree that's hanging over into his or her yard and then to attempt to recover that money from, from the neighbor's property owner. It recognizes that things encroach from one property to another, and the law does give property owners an avenue to address those situations.
So there are mechanisms in place for property owners?
There certainly are.
Well, there's also, there's also mechanisms for property owners that are adjacent to property owners that have, that may be encroaching on theirs and they can go in and do the same remediation on their side and thwart their adversaries and isolate the one property or one side of the property that has the bamboo. I just, I'm not sure of what form the township help comes in, and I'm concerned about that help and what it does to other situations. That's my counter response. How much does, you know, what are we responsible for?
I think that's what we're looking for tonight. Should we be forward, or should we tell the people it's a private issue between two property owners?
Do we have any other municipalities that have something to do with it?
In the last several years, everyone's been passing these bamboo ordinances. Because everyone has begun to realize how invasive they are and how destructive they are. Uh, and everyone is trying to discourage the planting of bamboo. Bamboo can crack sidewalks. It can get into water and sewer pipes. Uh, it travels. Uh, so everyone has started to pass these ordinances. The ones that we have done in our municipalities, we again have not seen any, we have not seen where we're creating, where we enforce it when it's private property. We only enforce it when it comes out into the sidewalks and the street or it's impacting some of our infrastructure in any way, then we enforce it as the property owner.
So they realize the question, are you going to get involved in enforcement when it comes about the root? If I'm reading you correctly, you're a official of the league for that reason. And I don't know whether to...
I, I think that what the code department is looking at, you see the list from Old Road, Glenside, Roslyn, Catwaller Avenue, Valley Road, Cedar Road. There are locations throughout the township where this is becoming a problem that people are calling and simply won't stop calling because they expect the township and the code department to do something. And I believe it was... And I believe it was Commissioner Myers who asked that this place on here, unless it's in our world, I guess, but because they are receiving a lot of calls, and the answer is, if they already continue to say this is a private property matter, that's okay. But I believe the code department wanted to be sure that this board is okay with that policy continuing as it is for a while, and that if you get calls from constituents, and those constituents are being told it's a private property matter, there's nothing we can do. I mean, you understand that there's nothing we can do. Unless there's some sort of other action, which I don't know what that is.
Question, breaking, Commissioner Speedman?
So aside from providing assistance, as I understand currently...
Mike, can you speak up?
As I, as I understand currently, the growing of bamboo on private property is not a signal that's correct.
Correct.
There's no restriction?
Correct.
And we don't, there's no other precedent in the township for citing somebody growing something on a property which overgrows onto another person's property?
No. This ordinance, when it was originally drafted and presented, was because of the incredibly invasive nature of bamboo, that it tried to establish that if you were going to plant bamboo anywhere near your property line or anywhere on your property, it laid out what you were supposed to do to prevent it from encroaching on your neighbor's property. But we do prevent, we do have ordinances that would address all sorts of weeds or other things from your property encroaching onto another property. This would be like a plant guide, so if you have some sort of, you know, plant that sort of grows rapidly and it's encroaching onto your neighbor's property, it's the exact same, so it's the same thing with, with trees and things along those lines. It's all, it's all a matter of dispute between private property owners. Thing we wanted to do with this ordinance was, we wanted to create something very clear because a lot of municipalities, people tend to plant these near their property line because it creates a nice sort of barrier. And then what happens is they go out to the sidewalk, they start breaking up sidewalk, they start hitting sewer pipes, they start going into curves. That's why we wanted to have something definitive for enforcement action for us when that was happening.
Do we have the authority of the township to create the violation if the bamboo encroaches upon property, onto another private property?
There is a violation in the ordinance right now of bamboo.
Forcible violation.
It, it is enforceable, because what you're doing is what they should be cited for, is failing to prevent the bamboo from encroaching onto the other property.
But I'm hearing that we'll take it to court, if the court doesn't take that?
Well, well, the court is saying, we can't, we're not forcing somebody to remove it, and DJs by and large are not, don't have, they have the authority to fine you, they don't have the authority to tell you what you must do. So when these types of private property disputes arise, they normally have to go to common pleas, where a judge can issue an order telling you to remove all this bamboo within your certain amount of time, or you're in contempt of the court. It's the same thing we do with the code enforcement matters. If somebody hasn't cut their grass, we can go to the DJ and get them fined if we want to force them to cut their grass or force them to do other property maintenance, then you have to go to common pleas to get, to get that accomplished.
Here's information from our department.
Do we need to do anything else with our court just to commit the violation over the private property to be enforced?
No. I believe that our ordinance, the way it is written, provides for what the township wanted it to do, which was, if it's encroaching on another property, another private property, then you can be cited for that. But the, the removal, the remediation is not something we're, we were going to take on, because it's a private property.
Okay. I, I gather that there's not authority to, the township owner of a property to remove it or something, but can we, by ordinance, give the judge of our way to over somebody to?
No. We do, we do not have the, we do not have the authority to give a member of the District Justice, a DJ, we don't have the authority to give them a power that isn't already afforded to them by the state. So, so we can, we could cite somebody, this property owner, you could cite every week saying, you have property, bamboo that has encroached onto another property. But it's only when you get up to common pleas that a judge can say, "I'm ordering you to, to rip out all this bamboo and remediate it, it's not your violation of court order." I think essentially what we have happening here is code, very often, we would remediate problems and then wean problems. And we would send somebody out to mow a lawn, or to clean up some trash, and it would be $300 here, or $500 there, or $800 there. When you start getting into the removal of bamboo, it gets a lot more expensive, and the other problem is, if we're the ones who are paying for it, we're the ones who are going out and hiring contractors, if we don't do it right and it comes back, then it, that additional liability comes on us. And this is why most of the municipalities, or every municipality that has this does not involve, get itself involved in a dispute between private property owners.
Uh, Mr. President, I mean, it sounds, it sounds to me, one thing we definitely need is a, a clear info sheet that we can share on the website, on social media, etc., with residents, explaining the limits of the bamboo ordinance, and in fact, explain to people something that I've had to do, you know, in consult with, with code enforcement council for three years, explaining about these private property situation, situations when it comes to the growth of some kind of plant, like trees, et cetera. I think that would be, that would be helpful to some extent. I know the two people, the two residents that I have dealing with the situation, they certainly wouldn't be satisfied, and one would be angry, and one, as clearly as, would be outraged, to hear that basically the township cannot compel their neighbor to remove this, this bamboo. But at least most people would be informed. Now, fortunately, Commissioner Myers' situation is a unique conundrum. I, I mean, I'm thorough by accident, so I don't know if there's, without somebody dropping money from the sky, I don't know how that, this sounds like a, just a really extreme, a perfect storm of unfortunate bamboo situation.
The question, the question becomes from the resident, and eventually, you're all going to hear this, is that, why do you have an ordinance if you can't enforce it?
I, I've heard this already.
Respectfully, that's not what you have. You can enforce this ordinance. This property owner wants us to go along to her property and remediate a problem on her private property, and wants us to pay for it. That's not the intent of this ordinance.
And it's not covered by that.
But it's not the intent of this.
I mean, there are a lot of people, the time manager, I think a lot of, I think there are people who are thinking, I, you know, I certainly need to do a better job of clarifying that to people. Again, in these two cases, you know, one person, neither will fully accept that explanation. One will be happy, and one will be full force outraged, but I'm sure many other commissioners would face the same thing, but.
I think the manager is looking for some direction for him and for I, my office, whether or not he'd want us to draft amendments to this ordinance.
And if so, what would you like those amendments, what?
To be, I'm sorry. May I ask, Mr. President?
Please.
So we can't amend it to put it, to allow the judge to issue a order to tell the property owners who's in command.
That's correct.
So the only possible amendment would be to commit the property to remove it?
You're, the only possible amendment is to, is to have us get involved in private property disputes?
By way of order?
No, like, like, it, it's, a lien would be if we go in and we do the work. That's a separate issue. A separate issue is whether or not we want to start actually getting in the middle of what is essentially a private property dispute. And there are, there are many in the township, not just bamboo, but again, the amount of, you know, like, I think I've spoken to a half dozen of you in the last several years about streets, and it comes up, it comes up all the time. I have a giant oak tree, old leaves are falling into my yard, and I want them to cut it, and we say it's a private property dispute, or that the weed and the branches are hanging over, we say it's a private property dispute. This is no different.
I think I'd ask you a question again. I honestly don't have the intention of what. If there are options, I don't otherwise go down.
I don't know what an amendment would look like.
Right away.
I'm going to state this.
Yeah, I was getting, I don't know who was around for the initial adoption of bamboo ordinance, but I think it was very similar conversation to how far the township goes, and how many problems can be solved, and how many things are we going to stick our noses in when there are private property disputes like this? And that was one of the concerns, and one of the reasons why I didn't vote for the bamboo ordinance back then, because it's just a, it's a, it's a bamboo foxhole set up.
But in the meantime, code is happening. It doesn't have to be answered.
I think if the commissioners, if they decide for, if the code enforcement not to get involved with bamboo on private property, it's not going to be answered.
And President Luger, we can, we can work with Ms. Montgomery and the code department to create that fact sheet that I think that Commissioner Speedman was talking about, so that when they do get calls about bamboo, they can provide this to the residents and give them, other than giving them the ordinance, which sometimes is difficult for people to understand, we'll give them some bullet points about what can and can't be done with regards to this issue, that we can get that done in the next, next week or so.
Socializing, socializing the message is not the concern. We can, we can do that.
Quick question. Do we, do we, do we continue to or start to cite the owner? I mean, that, then that's the process that I talked about, then, then they go to the District Justice, and the fine is up to $1,000. Well, whether or not the homeowner can pay that fine, then do we cite them again three months later, six months later, a year later?
For a total of 18 times.
And we have any?
I don't have, I, I don't pretend to have a solution to the problem, but I do think it's something that we need to look at, and it's going to get worse. It's not going to get better.
So, so if you're going, so we can move on, actually, going to the original question, and that is to consider amending the ordinance. So based on the information you just provided, Council, Council, the original question is whether we should consider amending the ordinance?
So the question that was posed before consideration by the full board was just that, do you want to consider any amendments to this ordinance to resolve the issue as the layout?
So it sounds like, yes, you do, and you want to say, no, we're not getting involved. Basically, it's a, well.
It sounds a little like, no.
No offense. We, we do it this way.
Right. I believe we're sort of, okay, that's.
Well, then, my, my question is, how many times and how often can a property owner be cited for the, the same problem?
Property owners can be cited on a daily basis for failure or remediated problem. So if code department wanted to, they could go out there every day and write a new citation every day. It's the same as cutting grass, or not having trash, or parking a car where it shouldn't be, they can do it every day. Obviously, code should use some, and they do use some discretion in how they handle these matters, but it's a continuing violation.
So can we just say, no, for right now, not changing that, there's only a problem that you have, and others probably have as well, but we agree that we're not going to come up with an answer to this evening, so we know we're not going to amend this, but we should still continue to look for other answers besides citing it every day. Is that fair to say? And, you know, just looking at maybe what other townships are doing or something like that, if, if they're doing anything, but we're not going to, we may be here totally like, still not an answer, so we agree with that, but we're not going to consider that as being the rule.
Well, I, but I have a question. Why would we make a decision not to cite it when it's in our ordinance? I mean, I understand the problem, the climate is very up, but how do we arbitrarily make a decision that one owner should not be cited, and other owners might be cited? That to me is, is a problem for the township when you start to choose who your owners can cite for what reason, or whatever.
Should be under one.
We're not going to truly cite them every single day, like?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily, I mean, once again, back to discretion, I mean, I had property in my, in my order, we dealt with the property owner, and actually the District Justice suggested that citing every day was not, was not appropriate, you know, put some limits, but at the same time, I don't understand what the criteria is for citing, who should be cited and who shouldn't be cited. It's in the ordinance. It was the same conversation we had about the whole, it was the same conversation we had about the cars parked on, on lawns. I mean, there was, there was, there was a conversation where there was a term, I'm sorry, there was something said by the time the chief of police, which was Chief Kelly, that we would talk, go out there and talk, I think it was Chief Kelly, maybe I shouldn't have said that, that, that we would go out and talk to the neighbors. The ordinance had, had a mechanism, if there were cars parked on the lawn, they would send a letter, and if they didn't move it, they got cited. I mean, we have ordinances and they're written a certain way, why, how do we arbitrarily decide who gets cited and who doesn't?
And the problem with this is that citing the property owner will not resolve?
I understand that.
Okay.
I completely understand.
So as to Commissioner Schreiber's question, I take it that if you do not perform a motion to amend a policy, then you would simply, you will cite them as consideration? That's your decision.
So bottom line, thank those lovely people, code.
Well, code would continue to enforce the regulations in the currently written. Homeowners would continue here, we apologize, this is a private property matter, there's nothing more we can do than what the ordinance provides. And then you'll be getting phone calls, and it'll be angry, but just so you understand, that's all.
I'm proud of your advice.
If somebody would like to have an agenda in the future, insert a review.
We'd get a site answer.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez, you want to continue that?
But we, we raise a notice.
There's no motion.
No motion.
There's no motion right now. I may have been a burden, maybe when I've been through that. And that equips the new business, if you please.
Thank you, Senator. It's time, Commissioner Schreiber, to put the table.
Thank you. We all have a wonderful time. We are due a JDA, and it's PS2, a motion to adopt ordinance on 2159 pending, chapter 16, article 2, statute regulations, section 10, new terms, and 13, stop intersection, article 3, property regulations, and section 25, article 11, we do it at all times, no parking between signs, no parking near the corner, and 28, special focus, park visit to add no returns on Cedar Road, add stop intersections on Front Row, Garden Row, Viva Avenue, Rose Road Avenue, Arden Avenue, Windvale Avenue, Catwauler. Rosewood Avenue, Arden Avenue, Windvale Avenue, Cat Hall, Avenue, Fields Avenue, The Emma Avenue, St. Anne Avenue, and Kedwin Avenue, and no parking near the corner sign on Cricket Avenue, and South Montana Road, East of Westmont Avenue, and no parking between 12 a.m. and 7 a.m. sign on Old, Old, I believe, really, I forget. And repeal special purpose parking restrictions on Careful Avenue and Woodland Avenue, all of them. What would that, what would the nation possibly?
Second. Would you second it, any comments from the commissioners?
Oh, this is, I didn't even hear that, Commissioner Schreiber, if you could.
No.
As you say, I need some more.
I have a question, a question. I'm confused. Are we only talking about the locations that, that you, that are in the motion? And we have a memorandum. That's the second, thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments from the ordinance? Here are none, others in favor? Aye. Close the motion, please.
And in our second agenda, I have a PS3, is a motion to approve all the traffic saving locations as experimental regulation as listed in table 1, there's 10 item column, 10 different stop signs, and the case where like in progress. And I'm not being, as listed in all the table 1, and also.
Could we second any comments from commissioners?
So, these are experimental. My concern is the experimentation of speed tables.
This is for stop signs.
Stop signs on this. Sorry, I apologize.
Comments from the commissioners?
No, the speed tables are going to go over the bamboo.
Comments from the audience? Here are none, others in favor? Aye. Close the motion, please.
And we have an announcement from our chief of police.
Commissioner Schreiber, if you will allow, W. Chief Warner has to leave before the end of the meeting, so I would ask her if she would join me and the officers who are in the room, Sergeant Scott. It's just a small token that I want to present to Commissioner Tom Hecker. We, we have a point, Tom, and it has a badge on one side, a patch on the other. They give this to officers once they make their probation, and it basically has our core values of professionalism, integrity, dedication, and support. Your work over the years with us, so I'm speaking on behalf of many officers who have had the pleasure to work with you, your wisdom, your counsel, your ability to cut through and clear up issues has been really incredible. You've been a gentleman and a scholar, and I want me to really miss you. So I just wanted to present this on behalf of the township. Please applaud.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Schreiber to pass the question.
Uh, thank you very much, Mrs. Reza. Uh, the Public Affairs Committee has two items in view, this is the first is either PA or, this is a motion to convene a public hearing on and consider adopting Resolution 18-32, approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-19554 into the township of Abington, Upper Morland Township and Iceland.
Second. Okay, so approving the second item, I have the openers' delivery?
Yes.
Okay, so this time, I'll open a hearing on the ordinance number 18-32. And this is a comment from Commissioner, first.
If I, if I can, if I can, Commissioner Luger, this is a public hearing for liquor license transfer application to transfer a restaurant liquor license number R-19554 from the municipality of Upper Morland Township, Montgomery County, Montgomery County into Abington Township. The applicant is Whole Foods Market Club, Inc. The property which is the subject of this hearing is the application for an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license to the applicant's business at 1575 Fairway, Jenkentown, Abington Township. The hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a liquor license into the municipality of Abington Township. This application, which was submitted by Ellen Freeman of Flaherty in O'Hare, was received by the township on June 29, 2018. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires that the township render a decision within 45 days of the submission of a complete application, or in the alternative, within an additional 60 days at the township's election with written notice to the applicant. My office notified the applicant's attorney of the township's intent to hold the hearing on the applicant, application this evening, which is within the statutory time requirements. We have reviewed and found the application to be substantially complete. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code sets forth certain mandatory provisions with respect to processing applications for intermunicipal transfers of liquor licenses. Section 4-461B3 of the Liquor Code provides that an intermunicipal transfer of a license must first be approved by the governing body of the receiving municipality when the total number of existing restaurant liquor licenses and eating place retail dispenser licenses in the receiving municipality equals or exceeds one license per 3,000 inhabitants. We have contacted the Code Department of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They have confirmed that Abington Township has in excess of one license per 3,000 residents. Section 4-461B3 further states that upon request for an intermunicipal transfer, at least one public hearing shall be held by the municipal governing body for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a license into the municipality. Accordingly, the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board may not approve a new license until the township first holds a public hearing and approves the intermunicipal transfer application. The township is required to render its decision by resolution of ordinance, and we have provided for the board this evening a copy of a resolution approving the transfer and a copy of a resolution denying the transfer. The application has been advertised consistent with the Liquor Code on July 27, 2018, and along the second, 2018. The applicant is represented here this evening by Ellen Freeman Esquire. Ms. Freeman, you will now have the opportunity to present the application and the information, and the evidence you would like, and any testimony you would like. And then make yourself available, and if you have any witnesses here with you this evening, make them available also for questions from the board and from members of the public that request party status during this hearing. Do you understand this process, Ms. Freeman?
Okay.
You may proceed.
Great, thank you. As your solicitor mentioned, my name is Ellen Freeman. I'm an attorney of Flaherty in O'Hare, after my law firm, based out of Pittsburgh, and all we do is liquor licensing. In fact, I was here not too long ago for one of our clients, he's likely recognized me. And since your solicitor went over the Liquor Code very thoroughly, I'm not going to go over it with you today, but of course, if there's any questions from the commissioners or the public on Liquor Code, you'll just ask my name. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of Whole Foods Market. I have with me Lance McAllister. He is the project manager of Whole Foods Market's construction. So if there's any questions about the proposed remodel at Whole Foods, we'll be able to sit up here and help me answer them. And Whole Foods, when you have a Whole Foods in your community, you're more than just a grocery store. They're, they come more as a gourmet grocery store and a farmer's market. It comes with a butcher, a baker, florist. So there's a lot of amenities that come with Whole Foods. And Whole Foods is now wanting to add an additional amenity of a beer and wine shop for, an amenity for their consumers. So this is not unusual in Pennsylvania. I know Abington Township has a few grocers that have come in now and added those additional features into their grocery store. And Whole Foods is really no different here. Whole Foods operates 13 other liquor licenses in Pennsylvania. And of course, they operate liquor licenses across the United States and there are other stores in other states that allow for these sales for the past couple decades. They have two in Philadelphia and three in Montgomery County. Closest one to Abington is the one in Spring House. If you're familiar with their operation there, it's going to be very similar, proposed here. And in each of those communities that Whole Foods operates in, they have a reputation of excellence. And they have a reputation of being a responsible operator, an exemplary employer, and a good neighbor. And they knew when they entered into the Pennsylvania alcohol industry that they had to protect that reputation. So they've put together safety policies and procedures, and they have strict standards that each of their employees have to abide by in order to sell alcohol in a safe manner and to keep the community safe still. The Whole Foods in Jenkentown has been operating for a number of years. They have, they employ over 100 employees, and with the addition of a beer line selection, they will probably be adding more employees, but at least going to be having some managers and promotions in-house, so there's opportunities there. So if you're familiar with the Whole Foods in Jenkentown, the remodel is going to be taking place in the front left of the existing store. There are seating already provided, and there's food options already provided, and none of that will be going away, in fact, they'll be expanded. So there will be additional seating that is going to go up against the windows. And then some of the features that are already there are just going to be shifted either up into the grocery store or over to include some more space for the shelves where the beer and wine will be located. The hours of operation will stay the same, and they will be, for the beer and wine sales, Monday through Saturday, from 8 a.m. to 9 p.m., and then Sunday from 9 a.m. to 9 p.m. They start a little bit later on Sunday, even though the grocery store may be open, the alcohol sales, I will have to be a little bit later. The alcohol will be separated from the rest of the grocery store, so there will not be any alcohol displays throughout the grocery store. The only place that you will see it is if a consumer walks onto the licensed premises in that front left part of the building, and then a little bit onto the right as well. They will have designated cash registers on the licensed premises where the alcohol sales will take place, so none of the normal cash registers that you see throughout the grocery store will accept those beer and wine SKUs. They will be the designated ones with the employees who have been re-up trained. And you're probably familiar at this point with RAM, it's the Responsible Alcohol Management Program. Each of the associates that work in the licensed premises will be RAM server trained. And then in addition to that, there will be managers who receive additional training. Whole Foods have a 100% carding policy, and their employees are trained on that, so no matter what your age, you'll be carded at Whole Foods. Um, this one, this grocery store is just a little bit different, as it does allow for beer on premises and wine on premises. So, I, I know in some of the other presentations I give, they only do beer, but Whole Foods expands it to wine as well. So if a consumer wishes to have a glass of wine on premises, one of the trained associates will be the one to pour a glass of wine that will be distributed to the consumer at the register, that's where you purchase it. Again, there's still no waitstaff here, there's no bartender, there's no real restaurant atmosphere in the fact that there's waitstaff, but everything will occur at the designated registers on the premises. There are no happy hours, there is no entertainment that's going to be on, on the premises, so it's really not going to look like a bar, they're not acting like a bar, so, you know, that will keep residents or consumers on the premises for all that long. And then lastly, there will be security cameras that are installed to cover all of the alcohol products, as well as the cash register. And then, of course, while the, while the restaurant is open and operating, all staff members who live in the licensed premises who have been trained will be monitoring anyone who's consuming on premises and then anyone who's at the register as well. With that, I want to turn it back over to commissioners for any questions, and of course, from the public as well.
Questions, all questions?
I just have a question. I mean, it's a great, it's a great thing, I'm able to, um, put the, I'm saying that, I think it's great. Everything is closed, so if you have, if you want, whatever, great beer selection. I have to stand next to someone that's clear, and, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, questions applied, and then Commissioner Sanchez.
Would they be able to buy and drink in some of the tables that are at Whole Foods?
Yes, yes, they're, they're permitted, well, they're permitted for off-premises consumption. They can, they can purchase as many as they wanted at time. And that's no different from, you know, your applicable obligations. For off-premises consumption, they're only permitted to buy 192 fluid ounces. And when it's for off-premises consumption, typically the, the sales associate will ask that, and they'll bag it up, staple the receipt to it, so that it can't really be opened up. And of course, you're going to have some people that are going to open up. There's no policy to kick people off drinking on premises, and they don't have limit, like some other grocery stores have. But that's because in their experience with their other stores, they've seen very few people take advantage of drinking on premises. And the reasons for that are kind of the ones that I mentioned, since there's no happy hour, no entertainments. There's really no signage to say, we allow drinking here. So it's lack of knowledge for a lot of the consumers, and then just no reason to stay past a few beers here and there.
All right, so, so are you going cold beer?
Yes, there will be cold beers at ours, that's what I'm trying to do.
So I could go there with Carol, and she could pick, and she could pick out beer?
For your ages, I guess you can.
Put the label on, we'll have to.
That's all we're concerned, Jesus in the eyes. I can tell you what pair of fruit we're going with, a little turkey.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just a general comment, we've now seen this in a couple of other grocery stores, the Giant in Huntington Valley, and the Acme, uh, the Billion Plaza, and it seems to be working, we did not have a lot of complaints. It seems to be working, and they're, they're adhering to the rules I've been IDing, and that's, you know, shocking, so. And it seems to be something that the customers are appreciating at the value of the store, so. Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Thank you. Uh, just, just a question. Uh, in the letter, it states, wine, alcohol, and beer. We're not talking, no liquor.
They don't have liquor sales at the moment. Under the license that they are requiring, it's a restaurant liquor license. So by law, they could sell spirits for on-premises consumption. Now, in a lot of the other Whole Foods that have been built from the ground up, they actually do have pubs. Some Whole Foods have rooftop terraces. The fact that this one has already been built, and it's one of the smaller Whole Foods, they're not looking to expand into the spirits, because they're not going to have that pub atmosphere. So to answer your question, no, they will not have it. Are they permitted? Technically, yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any commissioners, questions? That's it, back to you, your counsel.
He's just there, if you guys have questions, I can answer.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Let's see, let's see, you're not, the beer don't sound good.
Okay, then, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll, it's time to close the hearing, and we want to just place here, it's going to be motion. Okay. Public hearing, and convene to consider adopting Resolution number 18-032, approving the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-19554 into the township of Abington, Upper Morland Township and Iceland. Second. Could we second it, any comments from commissioners, staff, the public? Here are none, others in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, the second and final item of the public chairs is P2. Uh, this is a motion, not Resolution 18-04, Resolution in support of House Bill 705, on 2018, an act providing for safe drinking water. It became in support of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Environmental Quality Board. He set lower limits of contaminants for higher standards of safe drinking water at the township. That's over.
Second. Could we second it, any comments from commissioners?
Uh, I just, I, I just want to personally thank Commissioner Thompson for his proactive, outstanding, and nonstop work on this issue.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
I consider, if you would say, Commissioner Thompson, please.
Any comments for Stan, or any comments for the panel? Before you start, have a second comment, question, and reply.
Saying his, his efforts have fallen outside the township, township boundaries. I was with him at the shelf handler, and he was thanked a couple times from other commissioners of the state of the.
Commissioner Frank.
Just to echo the sentiments, I was on the phone for about 40 minutes with the president of Aqua this morning. And anytime I mentioned Commissioner Thompson, you could tell he was ready for some serious heat that I was bringing. So I appreciate it and we'll continue to work all together. But thank you very much for taking the lead.
Thank you. Okay. My apologies. The sentiments?
We'd be happy if we could, um, through the delay, on your behalf of the township's fire level advisory council, we will currently support this resolution. It's House Bill 705 as bipartisan support. It's been stuck in the debate while it's very commonplace. We didn't think there were particular wishes and this problem could exacerbate, it would be proud to conclude, so I guess we will be supportive of it, particularly men who are standing through stellar leadership on this, Commissioner Thompson. You made our job much easier. We've been disseminating information that conservatives need and several of the commissioners have. Tom Hager, I'm really missing you. You all are using a great commissioner, but I'm ranking the wonderful neighbor of neighbors. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any none? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, pass.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the public affairs.
Thank you very much to Commissioner Stewart, the National Commissioner Thompson. Close question, Stephen Frank from Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, President Walker. Treasury report is on five exceptions if I'm going to do it. Move on to our first item, FC 01080918, motion to approve investments for the month of June as previously circulated to the board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $923,000. Interest rate yields ranged from 2.35% to 2.45%.
Remove the second item. Commissioners, commissioners, staff, residents, are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Close the motion, pass.
And FC 03061918. Is that correct? 0619?
Yes.
Or should that also be 080? I'll repeat that. FC 03080918, motion to approve the lay of spend measures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $3,957,575.99. It's ours away to the amount of $1,822,240.00. A zero and one cent. And authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment and bills and contracts as they mature for the month of August 2018.
Second. Remove the second item. I have the role of this.
Commissioners Myers?
Yes.
Brodsky?
Yes.
Rockman?
Yes.
Placita?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Hacker?
Yes.
Ewman?
Yes.
Vey?
Basically, the objection I have is it sets the precedent, any other developer, or any other real estate attorney, or anybody that wants to commit, they can say, "When you approve the text amendment for these guys, why aren't you approving it or letting me go ahead with my project?" And even if you look at BET and Mr. Markman through their presentations, they've pointed to Sunrise, and they've also pointed to the Penn State norms as to what was allowed for variances and things outside the scope of the development that's allowed in the Abington zoning ordinance. And I think what will happen next is somebody else will come along and say, "Look what you did for BET, I want the same thing, and I want a little bit more." So BET's text amendment is still 250% above the density that's allowed under current ADO. And I just feel as though the community has been so clear and so strongly opposed to this, and that the text amendment is just so outrageous, that I would like to propose that it be stopped immediately with no further meetings.
Thank you for your time, sir. Next, Mr. Justice, please.
My name is Robert Martin, 1665th Avenue, Aliso. And I do have a thank you card. First, I want to say, thank you all. Thank you to all of you. I want to thank the board, Abington Township, the president, Wayne Duhler of the Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners, and the community developer Van Beach Resilience, and the Department of Recreation Director Andy Alt. This is on behalf of my brother Johnny. There's no mistaking the happiness that comes from knowing people with such kindness and giving hearts. Just from the bottom of my heart, my mother has passed, spent her money back there in the park where she was there at the fair. Lillian, thank Johnny and the rest of the family. We appreciate the certificate of commendations to Johnny and the plaque, and the new sign that was made, that's going to be put up on the new clubhouse in the Questmont Park. He was overwhelmed with joy. And this is just a blessing. I love you all, Johnny and Rosalind. Oh, I mean, like, but I just thank you all. I appreciate all that everyone does for my brother Johnny. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Tom, so I just wanted to comment. His father called my home around 6:30, saying she could not get up to the lobby yet, into the boardroom. So she wanted to be going to leave that car. That was four hours ago.
Yes, I remember.
And I told her, you could not go out of protocol, you had to abide by the script. So she had to.
Would you be fine to write?
And I said, "If I waited an hour for you, I would have to make an hour for others." So we sat there basically for four hours of the message delivered, the writing, and couldn't do better. And condolences for passing of your mother. She did get the confirmation of the clubhouse receipt before she passed. So we have to adore it, we all thank you for our prayers and wishes to you and.
Thank you. And it's been a while since I've been here at a meeting, because I'm very active, very busy. And I love the beautiful world. It's really nice. I feel good being here.
Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Walt Brady at Bryan Lane, written book. And Amanda Deadlau was here earlier, she couldn't stay. She asked me if when I read something, it refers to the same thing that Herb McMahon was talking about. But I'll just read what she was prepared to say while she was here. "We are growing a number and resistance to the BET text amendment, which review more as a significant redraft of a fledgling code that our township zoning board approved and enacted just one year ago. We also believe that it would constitute illegal spot zoning if approved. We have attended meetings and will continue to attend meetings to voice our disapproval of this process that threatens to drastically and detrimentally change the face of our township, not just through this proposed project, but also because approval of this proposal will open the door to other developers who will view our zoning code as a suggestion rather than an ordinance. While our resolve only grows, we wonder for how long and how many times we will be called on to explain that this proposal is not what we want for our neighbors, or our town centers, or similar districts. The tactic of submitting an observed proposal then scaling it back is childishly transparent, seen in many times before. The latest proposal remains a grievously violated of our new code at 250% of maximum allowable densities and in the heart of our town center. It is a slap in the face to work, to the work that you, our township representative, has all completed just last year. Moreover, it defies logic that you should be asked to implement such a drastic zoning change to any area within our township, particularly because the entire zoning code was rewritten just one year ago after an exhaustive and comprehensive study. We have taken to heart the words of Commissioner Stugelmann during our January 10 zoning hearing, who said, in quotes, "A responsible development for me anyway starts from the street level perspective to the neighbors and the neighborhood." And he added, in quotes, "Ultimately, it's the neighbors, the residents, and not commercial property owners or developers who send us here and whom we represent first and foremost." Those words apply to all of us as citizens of Abington Township and to all of you as representatives. To be clear, we do not take issue with any individual or company seeking to make a profit in our township. But we are absolutely opposed to anyone who seeks the profit while we suffer or commence a loss. This proposal, if approved in any form, is uphearing to the character and culture of Abington Township, and it does away with the protections that our zoning code is intended to afford us all. Moreover, if approved, it will open the gates for others to more easily benefit from text amendments that will result in greater losses to Walgreens decisionals, as well as the deterioration of Abington Township. Please bear in mind that our zoning code was enacted for the purpose of maintaining the unity and integrity of our township. It is certainly, it was certainly not an act that catered to the vision of any developer, especially when that vision flattered with the interests of the people who live, work, and pay taxes. As citizens of our wonderful township, we have the absolute right to the quiet enjoyment of our lives in our lovely homes and neighborhoods. You are charged with responsibility for protecting and safeguarding that work. Neither BET Messers, Paul and Markman, nor any other applicants seeking such a grievous change to our code is entitled to any gift from you, especially at our expense. Hear our voices now. Put an end to this ungoing string of meetings. Please fulfill your duties to all of us who elected you to serve on our behalf, and do what is necessary to deny this proposal without any further delay, respectively submitted by the nearby residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the other topic, Commissioner.
Laura Lane, 31 Bryan Lane. And just a quick correction, I think I was heard the proof, the reading of the letter, not Amanda, but Amanda had come earlier to read. And I don't know if they have the final version, is it the final version?
So Amanda gave me the letter, and I gave you her mission.
Right, so, yes.
You're welcome.
I just didn't want Amanda to, because her one gave was, were down the line to get it.
Just give her three seconds.
Okay. So, and, you know, I did notice, okay, that for certain people, the time is extended, you know, unbelievably.
I think Coach Wolf, I would just say, why don't you start, so you can.
Right, right. So, you know, I do want to say, first of all, I'd like to say, to open, and this has just been on my mind for the longest time, we need a local ethics committee. We need a local ethics committee to talk. And I see the frown on your face, but your son stood before you today and asked, on behalf of his church, which may be your church, $400,000. Ah, let me finish. $400,000, and you did not recuse yourself.
What is that attitude with that? How do you not go to that church?
You may not go to the church. That was your son asking you to approve $400,000.
You have something to say?
I am saying.
Not only is it not a business, Mrs. Lane has no understanding of the law regarding recuses. None. She asks for people to recuse themselves all the time. There is no basis for people to recuse themselves because you think somebody has a conflict.
Thank you, Counselor.
I repeat, it was not of your business. Do you have something to say?
I want to say, when your son stands, you worry about asking for my money, it is.
Do you have something to say? Say.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Say that.
Yes, I do. And I would also like to say that our solicitor is, I would imagine, often, I watched him on the side of a lawyer who was completely opposite.
Be careful where you go. Be careful what you say.
So his opinion is not always.
Be careful what you say. What are you looking for? Say something.
I, yes, I'm here.
Wait two minutes, and say nothing.
Okay. But this is fascinating, and this is why we need an ethics committee. So in essence, I want to talk about the colonnade settlement first.
What do you?
I want to talk about the colonnade settlement. I asked you at the settlement whether you knew the cost of it. Mr. Van Flory said that what I said was completely untrue, that everybody, everybody behind the scenes knew the cost of it. I didn't ask it to everybody. I didn't ask it to Mr. Barron. I didn't ask if he could get the figures in two minutes or 10 minutes. I asked if you knew when you were approving that colonnade settlement agreement, if all of you who approved it had any idea how much money came out of the taxpayer's pockets. That's what I asked. Okay? And I don't appreciate having my words turned around and then having no opportunity to politely come and correct it. When you make a mistake, you can politely take the correction. And so I would appreciate an apology for Mr. Van Flory who said what I said.
The three minutes are up.
I understand they are, and everybody else's were, but you didn't mind.
Because they said something. You have said nothing. Three minutes. Continue.
Okay. So again, I think I'm saying some important things that the people in the township need to hear, because this stuff needs to change. So I also would like to say that in terms of Salem Baptist, I am extremely disappointed that for some reason you think the record of that church and the background that came before it, with a payment from the district attorney of $1.6 million for ruining a contractor's reputation based on allegations made by that church that turned out to be completely untrue. That's a relevant factor when you're deciding. You, we were just talking tonight about somebody with bamboo who can't afford to get it taken care of. But you just gave a church that has millions of dollars and a very unsavory history my tax money. If I had the choice, I would rather see it go to somebody.
Be careful how you talk about others when you're at the podium.
I am talking the truth, and the truth lies in the documents that show what was done. There's nothing that I've said tonight that is not the truth, and I'm asking you to put the truth into your decision-making, because that was our money that you paid away.
Well, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Let me just say.
Wrap it up. Your three minutes are up. You just said it. Sit down, please.
Okay. And so I get less time than other people.
No.
You just decided.
One, you're married, you, or you're a psychic agent. I've given you six, seven, eight minutes. Please sit down.
Interrupted, interrupted.
Thank you very much. Okay? At this time, that concludes our formal agenda, and I think Mr. McFadyen will be there for your presentation at this time.
You, sir.
Much time of luck with the prayer that he gives, President.
Okay. I'd like to make one statement before we say goodbye to Dr. Heckrem. You're a very official, you can call him doctor, but Tom has a PhD, for those of you who don't know, so he is a doctor. He's our doctor, and he's operated and worked on every 14 commissioners that are sitting behind him. I think he's done some violence. But anyway, next Wednesday, August 15th, will be Tom's official mayday as Commissioner of Ward 10. The Board of Commissioners will appoint a successor for Tom within 30 days after that date, and details will be forthcoming to everyone in the township. But Tom, I have a proclamation, and they get a chance to read it first, so, bear with me. Whereas Tom Heckrem III, identity with the third, was first appointed to the Office of Township Commissioner for Ward 10 on the sixth day of January 2014, and then again on the second day of January 2018. And whereas Mr. Heckrem has served as a member on the Public Works Committee from 2014 to 2015, Chair of the Public Works Committee from 2016 to 2018, Chair of the Pension Committee from 2014 to 2015, and Vice Chair of the Fireness Committee from 2014 through 2018. And whereas Township Commissioner Tom Heckrem has always placed the people of Ward 10 and the township of Abington ahead of himself and his, in his deliberations. Now therefore, be able to claim this ninth day of August 2018, that Thomas R. Heckrem III be remembered for his many accomplishments and achievements, and for serving the people of the township of Abington with honor, integrity, and distinction, and is herewith recognized for his exemplary service above self by the formal expression of gratitude and thanks by the Township Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington. That's quite a compliment, sir. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. McFadyen, the Solicitor, the staff, and everyone at the township, the Tennessee, the people, we wish you a loving eye, you're a rock, and a real, a real good friend, and a wonderful bishop.
Thank you very much.
The hour will wait, so I'll be trying to figure. Those of you who know me know I don't like it to be about me, so this has been somewhat uncomfortable evening. And so I'd like to turn it back, and just for a brief moment, explain to you here, and those who will be seeing this on television, why I decided to run for Commissioner in the first place. And a date back to 2004, and this was the year after my wife and I moved in. We had our son Dylan, who celebrated his second birthday in our new home. And my wife gave birth to our second son, Aiden, in March of 2004. And we've been very public over the years about my wife's battle with multiple sclerosis. And during that time, after she gave birth to Aiden, she had a horrible relapse, and she was bedridden for more than a week. And it was a really challenging time in our lives. And one day out of the blue, there was a knock on the front door. And it was a woman that I hadn't met before, and her young daughters. And in her hands was a steak dinner with all the fixings. And she said to me, "I heard that you were having some trouble, and you want to help out." And I turned to my wife, and I said, "What kind of community we moved into? I don't know these people." And they helped us out repeatedly over the years. The daughters watched both of our sons, Maria Sawick and her husband Tim, so I want to give them a shout out. And that was my first case of this community, you know, real life-altering life. Fast forward to 2012. And all of you know that that's the year I lost my sister to cancer, but the age is very great. And we choked that thing to say. I was beyond despair. I was lost. I was in the darkest place I had ever been. And this opportunity arose, and so I seized it. And for nine months, I spent every weekend walking around the community, knocking on doors, talking to the residents, talking to myself, talking to my sister. And that campaign saved me. This community stepped up for me in so many ways. And so this is a little tough to walk away. I've really enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, staff. I don't think you get enough credit for the hard work that you do, day in, day out. Chief Malloy, it's been a pleasure. I'm not going anywhere. In fact, we're doubling down on our roots here in Abington, and I will find a different way to get back moving forward. This has been an experience of a lifetime, and I'm grateful to all of you who have helped me participate in it. Thank you.
Thanks for the knowledge. Always for closing comments. Please keep them brief. The hour is 10:26. Starting with Commissioner O.
Although I was sad that St. John's closed, we all would be glad to see Salem renovating the school, church, regularly, and come. Good luck.
Thank you. Commissioners of the Board.
Tom Mussoff was my swirly name.
Thank you. Commissioner Willis.
Congratulations for your police officer. And Tom, I've already gave you, you know, your life.
Thank you. Commissioner Vayner.
Tom, you've sent a personal.
Thank you, Commissioners Stugelmann.
I will try to be brief. I haven't been here in one second. I do, I just want to send my personal condolences and feelings out to the families of both Dan Buckley and Brian Wears. Two people, two very, very different guys, who in their own way, in their own timeframe, have etched their names and their legacies on the history of our wonderful township, especially our extraordinary Abington Police Department. May all future successes of our EPD be part of their legacy and memories. They are absolutely part of all those successes. Commissioner Tom Heckrem, I won't, I really won't, I won't take too long with this. You have raised the bar for all of us. You have made me a better commissioner. You and Janelle have set a standard for, for public service and dedication to the community, and that is the example for absolutely everyone. You and I will always be friends. Your presence on this board, though, will, your absence will be shown. So I would just say, scarecrow, I'm listening most of all.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Goodbye to mine. I will call you and say hello for good bye later. And I also want to say that Officer, the hosting, some of the pet fair, he was always involved, but not because he has been involved several years with Roslyn Pet Fair, so I was thinking of those movements that he was there on in the township, or the Abington.
We'll work that out.
Yes, we'll talk to you in a little bit. I do have an announcement. Abington Township is excited to announce that the Roslyn Fall Festival and Car Show will be held on Saturday, September 22nd, from 12 to 5, Alhston Road, from east to Woodland Road. This year's event will include activities for children, youth, including facing that town. I'm not going to throw all this, because it's late hour. But if you want more information on this, it's www.abbington.org/roslynfallfest. And there is a raid date, raids on Saturday, September 22nd. It will be due to Sunday, September 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Tom, you have been a really wonderful commissioner. You can be very proud of your service. Personally, you have been extremely kind. You have set an example to all of us of how we can treat each other. And I thank you for that, and I wish you the best of luck. And the best part of this, the only good part of this, is that you'll still be in Abington.
Thank you. Commissioner Vayner.
Thanks, Mr. President. So Tom, we've discussed this privately, but I can't let this go by without acknowledging this. It was almost one year to the day. Now, last year at this time, when I was appointed to the Board, and then subsequently was elected. But you actually stepped up for me personally, in a way that I can't let go and say that that's always going to be something that's always going to be etched in my memory. You exemplify just not being a great commissioner and being a great individual, but as a person, you did that. I'm forever grateful for that. Thank you. That exemplifies not just what you've done for the community, but what type of person that you are. I can't let it go by without saying thank you. You're going to be missed. There's not a morning I don't want to pick up the phone and call you in that special hour when you're driving and ask for guidance and advice. But suffice it to say, hopefully that still is available even after you're long here. But Tom, a personal heartfelt thank you is not enough kind words for me to express, but thank you. And I wish you the best and the well with you and your family. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Vayner.
You know, in life, some people are lucky to have a lot of people that inspire them, but also to become friends with them. And I had that with you, Tom. So I know hearing all this good stuff about yourself is, you know, number one, probably something you're going to clip on the video and keep playing for your kids forever. But number two, something that I know isn't your thing. And that makes it even that much more of a true point that we're all making tonight. So thanks for everything, and I know I'll see you soon. Yep.
Thank you, Drew. Commissioner DePacito.
Everybody's sharing this nice stuff about you. I just have to share one quick fun memory with you, Tom. It was 2013, just about, and we were campaigning and doing our thing. And we would call each other on a pretty regular basis and go to things. And there was this one time where you called me, and you were screaming and so mad. I just, look, I'm six foot four, 240 pounds. I got a foot on you and maybe 100 pounds, and you scared the hell out of me. But it was then and there that I knew that your drive and your compassion for this town and for this gig, it was all there. And it inspired me to do the same, and not get so angry, but to move forward like you are, like we all did that year, along with Commissioner Sancho here. Thank you so much. I've learned much from you, and I'm so glad you stayed here.
Thank you, Julie. Commissioner Sancho.
Commissioner Heckrem. Tom, sorry to articulate this in the way that you would, you know, I often refer to you as the, one of the most articulate people around. I think you missed your calling as a news anchor, or trial lawyer, when you hear those are assaulting to you. I won't be accepting your resignation, because you've been, I'll still be calling on you as a consularary here, running by as I have for many years, so many things. I don't know how many times I asked him, excuse the poor grammar, where's Heckrem at on this? Because I trusted your judgment, trusted your, your sir or leader, and the grace and plowing you handled yourself in the basement, your personality, and challenges in life. It's truly an inspiration. So, you know, I've been here so long, and if you're standing here, and that's, you know, the only pal, I don't think of others, but we had lots of friends and colleagues, and everything you're around. So, good luck.
Good stuff. Thank you, man. Mr. Thompson.
Tom, this hasn't been that long, but thank you for the warmth and wisdom. Welcome to the Board. And you set the bar for me, and for Commissioner Vosk, and Commissioner Vey, as we partake in our new hearings. I really like that. So if you're still up here, please stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioner Haw.
So I have one question for the Solicitor for you. What's the process for redistricting a single street by working? And how do you do that?
We're working on it.
Thank you, Stephen. Doctor, it's a pleasure and honor. Everybody says such nice, soft things about you, like, under legal, like a little bulldog, and you could be talking actively. But you're fair and honest with it, so a better person I couldn't have worked for or with on this very short. And lastly, to you and the lovely wife, Commissioner Vayner.